Good morning again, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, January 26, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. or as close to 10 o'clock as we can achieve a quorum. The meetings are open to the public and we certainly invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinal Garcia, Grohl, Han, Labonge, Ledlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sinepidea, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, members of the council, members of the public. We are now officially in session. Before beginning with today's agenda, if I can ask everybody to please rise and join me in a moment of silence. As you all know, by the news reports this morning, there was a very tragic incident on the Glendale-Los Angeles border involving two MetroLink trains and another freight train that has caused at least four known fatalities, possibly more, and more than 100 injuries, including some city employees that were on the way to work. So, on behalf of those who have passed this morning and their families and everybody impacted, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And as I ask everybody to please take their seats, let me recognize colleagues that were in for a little bit of a hectic morning. We have not only the incident that happened this morning, Mayor Han is out on the scene, council members Garcia and Labonge are out on the scene. And I believe they just wrapped up a press conference briefing the press and the public as to what's going on. We also have Chief Bamahtri and Chief Bratton out on the scene. That is important in and of its own right. But we also have on the council agenda today consideration of a proposed sales tax measure for the May ballot that would fund public safety. And those council members, the mayor, the two chiefs are certainly part of that discussion. So, we certainly want to wait for them to return to City Hall and take the matter up with them being present. We also have a special agenda today scheduled for 11 o'clock. So, we have 30 minutes before we reach the special agenda. And that includes a vote on a sister-city agreement with the city of San Salvador. And we do have a delegation, not only members of the Salvadoran community here in Los Angeles who are here with us, but dignitaries from San Salvador who have traveled to Los Angeles for this occasion. And we certainly want to be respectful of their time as well. And so, in the meantime, what I believe we can do is tend to all the other items on today's agenda that don't pertain to the sales tax measure, the sister-city agreement, and then we'll...
Good morning again, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, January 26, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., or as close to 10 o'clock as we can achieve a quorum. The meetings are open to the public, and we certainly invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, members of the council, members of the public. We are now officially in session. Before beginning with today's agenda, if I can ask everybody to please rise and join me in a moment of silence. As you all know, by the news reports this morning, there was a very tragic incident on the Glendale-Los Angeles border involving two MetroLink trains and another freight train that has caused at least four known fatalities, possibly more, and more than 100 injuries, including some city employees that were on the way to work. So, on behalf of those who have passed this morning, and their families, and everybody impacted, please join me in Thank you very much. And as I ask everybody to please take their seats, let me recognize, colleagues, that we're in for a little bit of a hectic morning. We have not only the incident that happened this morning, Mayor Han is out on the scene, council members Garcetti and Labonge are out on the scene, and I believe they just wrapped up a press conference briefing the press and the public as to what's going on. We also have Chief Vamatri and Chief Bratton out on the scene. That is important in and of its own right, but we also have on the council agenda today consideration of a proposed sales tax measure for the may ballot that would fund public safety, and those council members, the mayor, the two chiefs, are certainly part of that discussion. So, we certainly want to wait for them to return to City Hall and take the matter up with them being present. We also have a special agenda today scheduled for 11:00. So, we have 30 minutes before we reach a special agenda, and that includes a vote on a sister-city agreement with the city of San Salvador. And we do have a delegation, not only of members of the Salvadoran community here in Los Angeles who are here with us, but dignitaries from San Salvador who have traveled to Los Angeles for this occasion, and we certainly want to be respectful of their time as well. And so, in the meantime, what I believe we can do is tend to all the other items on today's agenda that don't pertain to the sales tax measure, the sister-city agreement, and then we'll just have to go with the flow a little bit this morning. We have to play it by ear depending on when other council members and the mayor are here, and how flexible our friends from San Salvador are in their schedules for today. So, Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Ludlow seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Ms. Han seconds.
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, this is a general public comment period, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And let me ask Juan Jimenez to come forward at this time and address
My name is Juan Jimenez, and I -- good morning, Mr. Chairperson, and also all the other council members. I was here not too long ago, gave everybody a DVD of Operation Yes. I hope that you had an opportunity to review it, if you haven't. I think you should take an opportunity to review that DVD. The reason I'm here is to make sure that how many here have actually reviewed or seen that DVD. The simple reason is because I have found some monies through the Internet, and at this point, when I found this money through the Internet, I have to sit down and talk to our councilman, Antonio Villarosa, and share this with him. When he brings it before this committee, I'm hoping that you second the motion and follow it up, because I am going to share this with him, which right now, it would not be appropriate for me to share this information with all the city council members here, because it's more appropriate to take this to him individually, and then he'll take it to the council here. And so, I'm hoping that we get your support. It's not about Operation Yes either, or it's not about me or anything else. It's about the community, the community that needs our services. If you're not familiar with the Boyle Heights neighborhood council, which is broken into four areas, we are actually located in Quadrant II. In Quadrant II, demographically, we are the only nonprofit 501(c)(3) grassroots organization besides the Boys and Girls Club, it's known as the Variety's Boys Club. That's the only service that those two are there in that community. Whereas, if you take demographically all the other areas like the Boyle Heights Council, number Quadrant I, Quadrant III, and Quadrant IV, there actually have a lot of multiple services in those communities. And just because they exist in that area does not mean that in Quadrant II, they're at liberty or free to go to the other areas. We have a gang issue, a gang problem, that even the LAPD knows that. So, we are sitting in a very unique area. However, we're not as fortunate as some other nonprofit organizations that do receive over an abundance of money. We have been operating our program with nothing. I mean, really, a lot of volunteer workers. The last time this agency got funded was back in December 2003. So, I'm hoping you take this into consideration of supporting when this item does come, and I'm hoping that he brings it before this committee for approval, what I have found in the Internet. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much. Dr. Daniel Wiseman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You pronounce my name very well. Don't you smile ever? Thank you. He can do that. I'm going to rise to speak about the neighborhood council's role as advisors. And in this sense, I'm speaking not only to the board, but in a greater sense, I hope through the media, this television broadcast, that many will hear me away from here. We have a situation in which many of us come before you in public comment. You've received some rather severe criticism recently from the courts for turning your back, for leaving your chairs, for talking to your friends, and for not paying attention. Thank those of you -- thank you directly and personally to those of you who are looking and listening. You've also received some criticism, and I've written it in what I call a 1-2-3 policy that you have here at this board. And unfortunately, we have in many city boards and in many city neighborhood council boards where we have a policy of "You have two minutes to speak," or "Three minutes to speak, Mr. Speaker." Sometimes, it's one minute. So, it's a 1-2-3 minute policy. And at the end of that, you're greeted with the response, "Thank you, next speaker," almost that fast. So, as I talk to my neighborhood council colleagues, I want them to know what really happens when you come before this austere board, or auspicious board, excuse me, you're not always austere. And what really happens in this brief experience I've had is that by the time we get here to talk to you, you've made up your minds. You've received our advice. You sometimes, several of you have told me personally, and which I hope to publicize more fully, that you've received advice, obviously, from not one side of an issue, but for both sides of the issues, and sometimes for more than both sides of the issues, as many sides as there are. And it's your task to make a decision. Once you make that decision, you're going to disappoint somebody. Neighborhood council colleagues, we are here to advise this board, and to advise the mayor, and to advise the departments, but we're advisors. We're not controllers, and we shouldn't be as frustrated as we sometimes get when we find out that our advice isn't taken, or it isn't taken as explicitly and as specifically as we wish it to be taken. On the other hand, I'm going to advise my colleagues, because of advice you have given me, members of the council, that the way to advise this board is to get involved in the issue early, very early. For that advice, I thank Ms. Grohl, who we had a nice interview a while back, and the earlier you get in -- I'm sorry, Ms. Misakowski, because the earlier you get into it, fellow council members, the more you will have to, first of all, understand the issue that is before this board, the issue that is before that department, before that agency, before that commission, and the more you will have the ability to influence the ultimate outcome, not direct it, not control it, influence it, advise it advisably. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items 1 through 4 are street lighting districts, and council recommended action would be to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinances to February 16.
Members, items 1 through 4 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, and unless there's any objection, continued to February 16. Next items, please.
Item number 5 is a protest hearing on a street vacation in Council District 12, and if there are no protests, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacation.
Members, item number 5 now before us. And again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. Anybody wishing to call this item special? Seeing none, let's move forward with the instructions. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items 6 and 7 are appeals on building and safety confirmations of assessments.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. We'd like to continue that item for 90 days.
That's item 6, or 7, or both?
Item number 6.
Okay, item 6 for 90 days. That would bring us to April 29. Seeing no objection, item 6 is continued, leaving item 7 before us. And with that request from members of the public to address the council on this item, public hearing is open and closed. Members wishing to call item 7 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item number 7, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 8 through 23, and on item number 23, there are two reports on the file.
Okay, members, items 8 through 23 now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. I believe we should call items 21, 22, and 23 special, and consider them concurrently. Those are various reports coming from the Budget, Finance, and Public Safety Committees regarding the potential may ballot. Any requests for specials?
Item 16.
16 called special by Ms. Misakowski. Mr. Ludlow?
20.
20 called special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials on 8 through 23? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 24 through 31. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, 24 through 31 now before us, and I do not have cards from members of the public wishing to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, 24 through 31? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item number 32 is also an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, item 32 now before us. Without objection, and again, no speaker cards, public hearings open and closed on item 32. Mr. Weiss?
Just like to call it special, please.
Mr. Weiss calls item 32 special. Next item, please.
That would take council back to the items called special. Do you wish to take item number 16? That was called special by council member Misakowski.
Before we take up item 16, for those of you just joining us here in council chambers, let me just provide you an update. We have a busy morning today. We've had, as you may all know, a tragic incident in Glendale, on the Glendale-Los Angeles border with MetroLink trains colliding. And we have council members Labonge, council member Garcetti, Mayor Han out on the scene. Separated apart from that event, we also expect those three individuals to come back here and be part of deliberation, items 21, 22, and 23, the potential sales tax measures for the may ballot to fund public safety. And last, but certainly not least, we have a delegation here from San Salvador to participate in council's consideration, and hopefully signing of a sister-city agreement. So, we thank you all for your patience. We're going with the flow a little bit here, as our timeframes that we planned for this morning are keeping us on our toes. Back to item number 16, Ms. Misakowski.
Mr. President, there is a motion that is just being ready to be circulated. I'd like to see if we could hold that on the desk, and perhaps go to item 32 first, that Mr. Weiss called special.
Okay, let's keep 16 on the desk temporarily. We can go to item 20, called special by Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you. I didn't know if there was anybody here from CLA or CL's office. I just, this is a minor, minor issue, and I just wanted to ask a quick question on this item, on the funding stream, just a very, very quick -- yeah, on this one. You probably haven't even looked at this one, but that's all right. I just wanted to find out, because I know that he's not here at the moment, but I just wanted to find out, is this, is the funding stream on this one through the Cardenas shift funding that was established through the California Legislature? Do you know?
Are we, are we on item 32, or are we on item?
We're on 20.
Oh, we're on 20.
All this is, all this is a grant that --
Yes.
So, this is, this is Cardenas shift funding?
This is the Justice Grant funding program, but yes, it is.
Okay, and if I'm incorrect, I'm incorrect, but I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge this, because one of our colleagues here spent a lot of, lot of hours working to provide funding. And so, this is a, just a complimentary note, not a significant question. If we find later that this was not Cardenas shift, I will stand back up and retract it. But I do want to take a moment to acknowledge Councilmember Cardenas for his work on the, in the state legislature to earmark this funding for counties throughout the state of California, and also credit to the Los Angeles Police Department to tap into this funding. So, I think what they're asking for here is a grant. This has come through committee. Bill, you're looking at me like, is it not Cardenas shift? It is Cardenas shift funding. Thank you, Adina, and Councilmember Misakowski's office. It's just a moment to praise and acknowledge Councilmember Cardenas for his work, because this funding that the city's tapping into wouldn't have been available had he not done his work on the legislature. Thank you, CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Now, coming to item 32, and Mr. Weiss. Okay, we're not quite ready. Ms. Misakowski, ready with 16?
Thank you, Mr. President, 16. Members, I called this special to give it some discussion and to do it justice. This is really an amazing project. It is a project for a multifamily housing project in CD 11, in an area, and Mr. Reyes points this out all the time, that is covered by specific plans. There isn't one specific plan that governs this project. There are three specific plans that govern this project. So, as you might imagine, from both a development and a community perspective, it's got some serious focus and constraints. But, members, what this also is, it's in the coastal zone. And a number of years ago, the city had been sued by communities and groups who were concerned in the coastal zone that the city wasn't following the state law. The state law, called the Mellow Act, requires that in our coastal zones, we are providing, we should provide, and throughout the state, we should be providing affordable housing in the coastal zone, recognizing the preciousness of the coastal zone, recognizing that when we give developers authority and the right to build in a coastal area, we also should be getting a benefit for affordable housing, and particularly affordable replacement housing. This project had a number of issues. On the one hand, straightforward up on the size of the project and where it was, the magnitude of project in what is known as the Oxford Triangle area, this is south of Washington Boulevard and just west of Lincoln. The project did not have any access available other than through a single-family neighborhood. And when we were going to do a project of significant height and significant density, the single-family neighborhood said there's going to be a significant traffic impact, not only in our neighborhoods, but as it goes out to the major corner of Washington and Lincoln, which is already a serious, serious intersection. So, the community worked very hard with the developer, and I give the developer credit, for doing something extraordinarily appropriate, but extraordinarily expensive. This developer bought another piece of property to provide access directly from this property out to Lincoln Boulevard. There will be a new street that will be dedicated, a whole new access with signalization that will be able to occur, that will give access directly and relief, not only to this property, but others as well, so that the burden won't fall on single-family neighborhoods. But that, what came at a price, it was a $5 million mitigation measure just to buy that road. And, members, as I had talked with others in the planning department, the magnitude of that kind of mitigation is normally only found when you're doing a significant commercial high-rise, a significant, much denser, much more industrial or commercial-sized project, not just for a 300-unit residential project. The reason that that's important is that that played a role in looking at the second issue. So, we worked out the issue of size, of plot plan, road being provided for mitigation, and some guarantee of the road's access, so the single-family neighborhood is protected against vehicular traffic coming in and out of this new road and/or this project. So, that was one issue, all the normal environmental planning considerations we had to give. But as I said, this project was also affected by three different specific plans, restricting height, it had a water table problem, and so, we were looking at essentially what could fit into a very, very tight constraint. But we also were very, very concerned, as were the community interest groups there, about affordability. So, even with those, within those tight constraints, we had said to the developer, and the community demanded, that this developer meet the Mellow Act and provide the percentage of affordability that is required. As we looked at it, our city guidelines say affordability shall be required if the city finds that it is feasible. What that meant, and I really want to compliment the planning department, and in particular, the housing department, because it turned all of our planners into economic real estate investment analysts to determine whether it was feasible, what a return might be, what a reasonable return might be. And as I can imagine, all developers look at, you have a lot of assumptions. You have conservative assumptions and not-so-conservative assumptions, and within that range, we had to make a decision. Under the Mellow Act, we would have been required to provide 30 affordable units. What we are providing today, and I am able to tell you that the developer has agreed, the legal aid community has agreed, and the residential neighboring community have all agreed with the project that is being put forward, and I thank Councilmember Reyes and the planning committee, which held two hearings on this, one on the hearing on the environmental mitigation side, and then another on the affordable housing. mitigation side, and then another on the affordable housing Mellow Act side. And after an awful lot of input from all sides, Mr. Reyes and the committee said, all right, conservatively, the housing department's at 18 units could be provided affordably. But let's just adjust a little bit those assumptions and push it up and bump it up to 24 units. And 24 units is what the planning committee recommended, and 24 units of affordability in this project is what is being put forward today. And members, I say to you that but for the extraordinary $5 million cost of the road, there's no question in my mind that the full 30 units would have been required and the full compliance should have been and is the precedent that we will be able to establish now in this area and throughout the coastal zone for all future projects. But I'm asking for support today. The motion amending condition 16 in the actions is before you. Councilmember Reyes has seconded this, and it is essentially just a little bit more specification and verification of where and how and what size those 24 affordable units will be and how the housing department will be the governance of verifying that those 24 units are coming in according to the standards that all the other elements of the Mellow Act would require. So it's been a very, very, very long process, more than two years in dealing with all of the impacts here. But I think in terms of providing the concerns from the community, the adherence to all the specific plan requirements, and the adherence to the extent that was appropriate for this project, for the affordability of units to be provided in the coastal zone in this project is before you, and I ask for the council to support this and give this recommendation an eye vote.
Thank you, Ms. Kowski. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise to one, offer my congratulations, and a strong thank you to Councilmember Kowski and her staff. They worked diligently on this issue. Along with the city attorney, Mr. Fong, we were able to maintain the integrity and the spirit of the Mellow Act. Along with the planning department, the housing department, we broke down the numbers. We truly made a strong attempt to be fair. And kudos to the developer who hung in there. I know they probably felt they were in the middle of a storm, but the fact is, we've cleared up our environment in such a way, I can see the real light in terms of what this is going to do for our city. The other day, I mentioned, colleagues, that in San Fernando, most homes are running for $500,000. In the east side, northeast side, they're running about $300,000. That tells us that more than half of this city cannot afford to live in the city. That means that everything we do from here on out has to be about how do we serve our bosses, our constituents, people who live in the city. And I strongly believe that Councilmember Kowski has been a strong steward in keeping an eye out for the whole city, because this is precedent-setting. This is a measure, this is an action that's going to be talking about what is feasible, looking objectively at the facts, looking at the return, looking at the cost of the development, and everything that has to be allotted for mitigation. How much are we going to be able to set aside for the people who live in this city? And I'm not just talking about the poor side of the city, I'm talking about the whole city. So this is that kind of project. I hope we can embrace this moment, those of my colleagues who are listening, and understand what this meant, because it talks about the future of this city. It is a foundation, it's a process, and truly, I believe, our planning department, as much as our housing department, we're going to have to sharpen our pencils and become financial experts on what the real estate numbers really mean when it comes to development. So I want to thank everyone for their hard work. We work really hard on this, and developers, I know you probably don't feel good about it right now, but in the long run, there's a whole city before you we can work with on together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Kowski, for a second time.
Thank you. I just wanted to reinforce that and also to thank Kevin Keller and my staff, because as Mr. Reyes indicated, we all have planning deputies who know the planning codebook, know our general plans, and know how to apply the rules. But this case really required extraordinary detail, going way beyond that. As I said, we worked with the housing department to really start analyzing pro formas from business communities, really looking at what it costs to build a unit, what is and should be a profit, because obviously, private property and private developers look to make a profit, look to make that investment. And I'm sorry that Councilmember Garcetti isn't here, because, members, as we are going to tackle this issue citywide, as we look at the inclusionary zoning policy that is being discussed and will be coming before us in the next few months, the kinds of analysis that we did here, not only from the economic side with the housing department, but with the community as well, bringing everything into balance, is the kind of new information, new detail that we're going to be having to look at in the future. And I particularly thank the housing department, particularly thank Kevin. And it wasn't only that analysis, it also was the mediation. Yesterday, in my office, both sides, from the legal aid community and the developer, were there, I think for five hours straight, hammering out the details, really looking, because they all know that we will be looking back at this case to say, if we could do it here on the west side with affordability, we will now set that mark, require it, and include it in every other project coming in. And I am just hopeful that we will also be able to achieve that level, not only in the coastal zone where the state mandates it, but throughout the city, as we really have to grapple with the issue. We hear over and over and over again that housing is an issue, we have a problem in the city by not providing affordable housing. This is a start, this is a way to do it. If we can do it with a major project in the Venice community and still adhere to every specific plan requirement, every limitation that was imposed, we can do it in this city. And I think all that we need is the will and the fortitude to move forward. So again, I ask for an eye vote on the amendment and an eye vote on the action.
Mr. Reyes.
I'm going to go through my thank yous, because I don't want to end this without recognizing John Foreman, Hearing Officer Betsy Weisman, Jerry Burge, Ken Fong, from Chama Crow, Michael Gannett, I know it was tough, but I'm going to thank you, Michael. Cindy Ster and her legal team, they fought hard, they stood their ground, but they had a great, I'm going to say this, challengers in the Legal Aid Foundation, Diane Kilimora, Suzanne Brown, Ben Beach, John Ling, and of course, Mercedes Marcus and a hard-working team. Thank you much, guys. And of course, Gerald from my staff.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. If there's no other members wishing to be heard on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 32 was being held on the desk, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Okay. Mr. Weiss, can we proceed with the amending motion?
Much ado about very little. We have a substitute motion on this very critical special event. I think it's been distributed. Thank you.
Without objection, let's open the roll on the substitute motion. Mr. Reyes, did you wish to be heard on this item, 32? Roll is open. Madam Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. And colleagues, that does leave items 21, 22, and 23 on the desk. And as I'm looking at the clock, timing couldn't be better, it's just shy of 11 o'clock. Let me ask Mr. Reyes to join Mr. Hahn in the rear of council chambers and prepare to escort the Honorable Mayor of San Salvador, Carlos Rivas Zamora, to the front of council chambers. In the meantime, Madam Clerk, let us temporarily recess the regular meeting. Would you please call the roll on the special meeting?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grue, Hahn, Labange, Ledo, Miss Kowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Lain Padilla, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session, and members of the council, members of the public, if you give us just a few seconds here, I want to make sure we're ready in the rear of council chambers before proceeding with the item before us today. Members of the council, can we ask everybody to please take their seats? Again, members of the council, may I ask you to please take your seats? Members of the council, thank you for taking your seats. And sergeants, let me ask for your assistance today in maintaining order in chambers as you begin this special meeting. May I ask Councilmember Ed Reyes, Chief of Protocol, Elga Sharp, to please escort Mayor James Hahn, Mayor of Los Angeles, and the Honorable Mayor of San Salvador, Carlos Rivas Zamora, to the front of council chambers? And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garcetti, as well as part of the escort committee. Members of the council and members of the public, today we are convening a special session of the Los Angeles City Council regarding the establishment of a sister-city relationship between the city of Los Angeles and the city of San Salvador, El Salvador. First, I would like to welcome... Thank you. First, I would like to welcome the delegation who has traveled here from San Salvador, led by Mayor Rivas Zamora. It is an honor to have you here with us today. Thank you for traveling so far to participate in this special session. We also have with us two members of the San Salvador City Council, Councilmember Abrego and Councilmember Contreras Teos. In addition, we also have with us today, Council General of El Salvador, Mauricio Ruano Martinez. Señores, bienvenidos. As you know, the city of Los Angeles is home to the largest concentration of Salvadoran Americans in the United States. Our city and the city of San Salvador are inextricably linked. While the people of Los Angeles and San Salvador have worked together on many projects over the years, today we seek to create a formal relationship with the international sister-city movement. It is my sincere hope that the actions taken today will provide a mechanism to realize the type of international programs that enhance and expand economic, educational, and cultural exchange between our two cities. The establishment of a sister-city relationship between Los Angeles and San Salvador will represent a significant step in building an even stronger relationship. It's taken a great amount of commitment and energy to arrive at this important day. I would like to acknowledge the many community organizations that have played such important roles in moving this process forward. Carlos Vaquero and the Salvadorian American Leadership and Education Fund, better known as SALIV, along with Caresen, the Central American Resource Center here in Los Angeles, Clinica Montseñor Romero, and the Salvadorian American National Association, SANA, and many others. I'd also take a brief moment to recognize former Councilmember Nick Pacheco and current Councilmember Ed Reyes for introducing the motion, which will be voted on today. During this special session, we will hear from both Mayor Hahn and Mayor Rivas Zamora of San Salvador. After the mayors speak, we will take a public comment. Councilmembers will then speak on the item, followed by our vote. Should the item pass, then our work begins. Mayor Hahn, Mayor Rivas Zamora, we invite you two to come forward at this time and address the council.
Mr. President and members of the council, obviously, this is a solemn occasion to all of us in the city because of the tragedy that happened with the train collision in Glendale this morning. And we've spoken with Mayor Zamora and asked, he requested that any festivities celebrating this momentous occasion of our sister-city relationship be postponed in memory of the victims of the tragedy. Certainly want to commend our fire department and police department to respond instantly to that devastating tragedy. I know Councilmen Eric Garcetti and Tom Labange were out there, and really want to commend all of our emergency personnel for their work. But today, it's my pleasure to welcome Mayor Carlos Rivas Zamora, Mayor of San Salvador. As you mentioned, this is the city with the largest Salvadoran population outside of El Salvador, and so we're very honored to have this sister-city relationship put forward. We look forward to continuing this relationship that has already existed for so many years already as a friendship between our two cities. But now we will, you know, formalize that relationship, and really appreciate that you are here with us. And I know we have some resolutions to exchange, but first of all, I'd like to hear from the Mayor of San Salvador, Carlos Rivas Zamora.
Alcalde James Hahn, Suerte Presidente Alex Padilla, queridos miembros concejales de la ciudad de Los Angeles. Amigos y amigas angelinas, salvadoreños residentes en esta bella ciudad.
Thank you, Mayor Hahn. Thank you, President Mr. Padilla. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to the Salvadoran community and to the rest of our friends here in this wonderful city. Also, I would like to join, like Mayor Hahn mentioned, I'd like to join in the pain and the feelings of the tragedy that has happened to the families this morning.
Quiero que reciban toda la solidaridad, todo el amor y todo el aprecio en este momento de sufrimiento de estas familias que hoy han sufrido pérdidas humanas y lesionados.
I'd like to extend our solidarity, our feeling and our affection to all the families that have suffered this terrible human tragedy.
Este es un pueblo grande, un pueblo fuerte, estoy seguro que podrán reponerse rápidamente. Sin embargo, quiero que sientan fervientemente nuestra solidaridad como salvadoreños.
This is a very strong and large city, and I know that you will be able to recuperate very, very promptly. However, I would also like you to feel the solidarity that the Salvadoran community has and will be joining with you guys in this tragedy.
En el nombre de más de seis millones de salvadoreños en la República del Salvador y en el nombre de mi capital, la República del Salvador, quiero agradecer el honor que nos dan de poder formar parte de este grupo de la gran familia de ciudades hermanas con Los Angeles.
In the name of over six million Salvadorans, and also in the name of the Republic of Salvador, in the name of our capital, I would like to tell you this is a great honor for us to be able to join you as sister-city, and thank you for this opportunity that's granted to us.
Hoy me levanté con una gran ilusión, una ilusión de compartir ciertamente como hermanos un solo cielo, un cielo en El Salvador y un cielo en Los Angeles.
Today, I woke up with great hope, great hope to be able to share as brothers and sisters the great city, the great city of Los Angeles, the great city of El Salvador, and the great city as a whole, the great sky.
Dios nos ha permitido que tengamos un solo cielo en el mundo, y estos momentos importantes de solidaridad de pueblo a pueblo nos harán más fuertes y más grandes cada día.
God has allowed us to share one great big sky, and in this moment of solidarity, it will continue to give us that opportunity to continue sharing the great sky that has been given to the whole world.
Como salvadoreño más que como alcalde de la capital de la República del Salvador, quiero agradecer profundamente el aprecio, el apoyo que le dan permanentemente a mis hermanos salvadoreños, a mis hermanas salvadoreñas, que se cuentan ya por más de un millón residentes en esta linda ciudad.
More than as a Salvadorian, as a Salvadorian, more than as a mayor, I would like to extend my appreciation, and I want to thank you for the support and the appreciation that you give our brothers and sisters from El Salvador, which at the current time, it's over a million residents of Salvadorans in this city.
Por lo tanto, quiero agradecer este convenio de hermanamiento, cerrando con una frase que hemos constituido todos los salvadoreños. Cuando estén en casa en El Salvador, digan "San Salvador es tuyo" y bienvenidos sean.
Therefore, I would like to end by closing with this phrase that is already in the hearts of all the Salvadorans. When you're at your home in El Salvador, please feel free to say that it is also your home and you're welcome there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hahn, thank you to both of our mayors. At this point in time, I'd like to call forward members of the public who wish to address the council on the resolution pending before us, beginning with Carlos Vaquero. And he will be followed by Ana Cubas and Francisco Rivera. And if there's other members of the public wishing to address the council, if you would kindly form a line behind the podium, we would appreciate that.
Buenos dias, good morning, Mayor Hahn, Alcalde Rivas Zamora, Mr. President, Member of the Council, Organizaciones Hermanas, amigos todos. I'm here today to join our community in celebration of this historic day in which two cities, two peoples will unite to continue a traditional friendship, cultural friendship for the next years. Since we started this project in 1997, we have been working very hard. I'm very happy to see that finally it's going to take place today. We have taken several delegations to El Salvador and several members of the council have joined SALF in this effort. But I want to thank other organizations and individuals who have also played a very important role in this issue. I want to thank members of SANA, the Salvadoran National Organization, who also have played a very key role in this. Councilmember Nick Pacheco and Councilmember Ed Reyes, we introduced the motion last year. And also, the members of the Rules and Elections Committee, President Padilla, Zain, and Grul, thank you very much for your support. And of course, I want to thank other organizations, Caresen, Clinica Monsignor Romero, and others to please join us in this effort. The sister-city is not going to happen alone, it's going to happen with the efforts of all of us working together as a community so we can help San Salvador to develop, we can help Los Angeles as well. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ana Cubas.
Good morning, my name is Ana Cubas, and I'm a member of the City Human Relations Commission. I am here to support the Rules and Elections Committee report and support Mayor Hahn and the mayor of the city in San Salvador in creating this very historic sister-city relationship. This effort is perfectly aligned with the mission of the Human Relations Commission, and that is to promote understanding between groups in our great city of Los Angeles. This declaration of sisterhood today is powerful because it will help Salvadorans better understand themselves, and it will help other groups better understand Salvadorans. I came to Los Angeles when I was 10 years old as a refugee child escaping the Civil War. I've worked hard, graduated from UC Berkeley and Princeton University, and I've also worked in this beautiful chamber in City Hall as a staffer to a true leader in our community, and that's Council President Alex Padilla. And I've worked with many of you and your staff. But for me, my own individual achievements don't really mean that much. I believe that there's a greater purpose for each one of us. As a Salvadoran American, I am filled with pride and emotion today. And as the Vice President of the Salvadoran American Leadership and Educational Fund, I want to thank the hard work of Carlos Vaquero and the other community groups, SANA and Clinica Monsignor Romero and the Chamber for their hard work for the past two years in making this happen. Thank you very much and hope to have your support today.
Mr. Francisco Rivera, followed by Isabel Cardenas.
As a Salvadoran American and as a leader within the Salvadoran and Central American community, I want to congratulate the members of the city council and Mayor James Hahn for your resolution declaring the city of Los Angeles and the city of San Salvador sister-cities. And also, I want to welcome the Mayor of San Salvador, Mr. Carlos Rivas Zamora, and to recognize the President of General Counsel Mauricio Ruano, and the presence of Mr. Juan Durán, President of Chamber of Commerce of El Salvador, California. It is very important for the members of the city council to recognize that the Salvadoran population in the city of Los Angeles is one of the most vibrant and very active communities in the city of Los Angeles. In the past, few groups had claimed the representation of our community, but now there are dozens and dozens of community organizations. And as Isabel Cardenas, which is like our godmother for all Salvadorans in the city of Los Angeles, can witness, you know, the growth of our community. So today is a very special day for us, and I call to all the city councils, you know, to members, to recognize this broad community and provide us with our fair share of the city's resources. It's not just a matter of celebrating, but we want to participate and have economic development, and you can make a difference for us. So let's see that that happens. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Isabel Cardenas.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having the Salvadoran community now become a sister of Los Angeles. Thank you, Councilman Tom Labange. When we began this effort, Councilman Nick Pacheco was in the 14th District. He worked very hard on this motion, and Councilman Ed Reyes co-authored it. And at that time, I just thought that a dream had come true because our communities living in San Salvador and our communities living in Los Angeles have to begin to work for programs that will benefit both our families here and in our homeland. And I don't see that Nick Pacheco is here, but I'm sure that if he were, he would also share this joy with us. Thank you so much. I would like to call the members of Salvadoran American National Association, the directors, to come forward because they worked very hard with Avak and Bernie Moto during the last two years. We're very thankful to Avak Kiotian for all the help that he gave us. We're very grateful to him. With us is Mario Fuentes Rivas, Salvador Gomez Goches, and we're happy to say that for the first time, we sat at the Board of Directors of the Sister Cities on Wednesday. We have been welcomed by Councilman Tom Labange. We're so happy because there's a lot of, a lot of programs that we're planning that are going to take place. Again, to all of you, I know I'm always bothering you with all my letters asking you for support. Thank you so much for all the support you've given us all these years, and way back to the 70s when Mike Hernandez was councilman. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, I would like also to address our community. My name is Guener Marroquin, I'm the International Relation of the Salvadoran American National Association. This is kind of a paradox. The Salvadoran history is being mixed of tragedy and happiness events in our history, and in a way is following up to our day with the tragedy of the trains this morning and at the same time celebrating a historical event for the Salvadoran, the immigrant community of this country. I just want to welcome the delegation of the mayor of San Salvador, thanks to the mayor of Los Angeles. And I want to say that among ourselves too are people who defended us throughout the years, people who advocated us, for us throughout the years. We have representatives of the American Church, Catholic, Episcopalians, Presbyterians, Baptists, among ourselves today, who share the pain of that time for the Salvadoran community. I want to also recognize the leadership of many organizations, salvadoreñas, that are with us today. I want to thank the leadership of Mike Hernandez throughout the years, helping us out, Antonio Villarrealosa, Ed Reyes, Garcetti, and others, friends of our community. We want to say that this is a very historical moment for the salvadoreños in this country because it's marking that we exist, that we're here, that we contribute, and we're here to give more to this great nation of ours. So thank you very much, and we thank our community, our council, Salvadoran council that are here, present with us, and other leaders from the immigrant community. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the community wishing to speak at this time? If not, then let me conclude public comment on this item at this time and recognize first the city council, the president of the Sister Cities Movement in Los Angeles, Mr. Tom Labange.
The members I want to thank, you welcome your new sister, okay? It's so special. As we all know, the Sister City program was started by then-President Eisenhower as a people-to-people movement, and there's nothing like people. And the people of our great city, the people of your great city, together, and the inspiration that you have is so exciting to see today. From our oldest sister city of Nagoya, to Auckland, New Zealand, to Berlin, Germany, to Bordeaux, France, to Elat, Israel, to Giza, Egypt, to Guangzhou, China, to Jakarta, Indonesia, to Canas, Lithuania, to Lusaka, Zambia, to Mackay in the Philippines, to Mexico City in Mexico, to Mumbai, India, to Nagoya, as I mentioned, to Pusan, Korea, Cum Samida, to Salvador, Brazil, to Split, Croatia, to St. Petersburg in Russia, to Taipei, the municipality in Taiwan, and also in Tehran, Iran. We want to see them more active in the future, but Vancouver to the north in Canada. This great collections of sisters is extremely special. This city of Los Angeles formed 223 years ago when 44 people walked nine miles to the banks of the Los Angeles River that formed the Pueblo of Los Angeles. This city of Los Angeles, where 42% of all the people of the city were born outside the United States, it's so welcome to have you here. And Mayor, Mayor Hahn, I thank you both for your efforts, and Mr. Padilla, thank you for your efforts as the committee chair, and as council members were called out, Mr. Reyes and all of us, Mr. Garcetti especially, and Mr. Villarrealosa and former Councilman Pacheco, an effort to make a difference in the lives of others of the Sister City program. The enthusiasm that you have, and we welcome you because in May, we have our special Sister City Festival, will help make the bond tighter, make the bond tighter. Because as President Eisenhower wished at the time, it's people, and it's people who solve problems, not necessarily people from big governments, but people from city governments to bring that bond. And I remember when I was in Berlin at the 50th anniversary of the airlift, I met the head of NATO at a signing, and he was so eloquent in saying, "It's the cities, it's the cities that bring the peace, and it's the cities that bring the people together." So we welcome you, Mayor, and we welcome this great sister-city relationship, and I say thank you very much, Mr. Padilla, welcome this new sister-city of ours in a so very, very special way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Bienvenido, Alcalde Rivas Zamora, and to our First Lady, la primera señora. I want to first say thank you for your hospitality. On the day of election of your great country, I was able to spend a few days there and appreciate, enjoy, and learn about the great country of Salvador. And what I learned there speaks to the pride, the integrity, the sense of community that Salvadorans have brought, not only to this city but to this country. As has been said, the second-largest population of salvadoreños outside of El Salvador is in Los Angeles. Well, that brings many opportunities to grow, to take on challenges, and over the years, working under Mike Hernandez, we saw the evolution, the maturation of great organizations. We saw Caresen reach its maturity, Errescati, SANA, SALF, ASOSAL, the Chamber of Commerce, the weaving of a great community, the fabric that came together is now shown today with great pride in this hall. For that, I want to thank you for your strong efforts. But we also know we have great challenges before us. As a matter of fact, when I left El Salvador, there's one great development project the mayor is very focused on, and we're spreading the news about the investment opportunities in El Salvador, trying to build up and define that bond. What does that bond mean? It means bringing forth the opportunities of development, but also means sharing our understandings of how we control our land use, what's happening to our environment, how we treat Mother Nature, not only in El Salvador but here in Los Angeles, and just as important, how we're treating our youth. We both have a great challenge in how our young people are falling into the gangs. We both have a great challenge, and how our young people are falling into the gangs. We know about that one big gang I don't want to mention because they don't deserve that recognition, but we're talking about how we nurture our young people. That's the exchange that has to happen. I look forward to the day when we can meet with Chief Branton, with the officials from Salvador, and talk about how we control this gang influence, this cancer we have in our city, because it's affecting your city of Salvador as much as it's affecting ours, because this is one community which we call the world, and we are intimately linked in a very, very strong way. Subverbemente les quiero decir muchas gracias por estando aquí. Le quiero decir muchas gracias al alcalde y la primera señora por su hospitalidad cuando yo llegué en Salvador, pero más que nada por lo que he aprendido. El corazón de la comunidad salvadoreña es muy fuerte, y hemos sobrevivido mucho, pero más que nada estamos en una posición para seguir adelante para nuestros jóvenes, para nuestras personas mayores, para establecer las viviendas, las escuelas, para poder reforzar nuestras culturas. Y con esto les quiero decir muchas gracias a también a los concejales Isaac Abrego, bienvenido, y Rodrigo Contreras. Muchas gracias, y ojalá que esta celebración sigue cada día cuando seguimos trabajando juntos. Muchas gracias.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Señor alcalde, colegas estimadas, miembros de la comunidad salvadoreña, es un gran honor tener usted aquí, ustedes aquí en este día histórico. And I want to thank the mayor and the members of the City Council of San Salvador, all the members of the Salvadoran community, which I'm so proud to represent so many of you and the great organizations, Sana and Salif and Defisal and the Chamber, and the wonderful thing about all of our communities is there's such a flowering of organizations, and something like this unites the community, where past divisions are put aside in the name of something bigger and something higher than ourselves. And I hope that the spirit of today permeates not just the Salvadoran community, but this city from this moment on after all. That's what these Sister City agreements are for. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your words today about the tragedy in Atwater Village in Glendale, the train tragedy. When I went down to San Salvador, one of the things that hit me so much in my heart was when Salvadorans went through tragedies, Angelinos stepped up, and we were like one people. And today, I feel the same way when you give us the sympathies in this tragedy too. We have so much to celebrate, and perhaps it is fitting that in a time of tragedy, because our societies have been, have come together, have been brought together by war, by migration, by gangs, by positive things, art and culture and history itself, that today we seek to open a new chapter. I was very proud with Mr. Villarrealosa to travel down to San Salvador and to meet with you, and later to have you in my home, and to be able to welcome and take a step forward in the direction of creating the Sister City Agreement. And one of the things I think Mr. Labange would say as well, that Sister City agreements are great, but they are only what we make of them. And I know that here in the second-greatest Salvadoran city in the world, that we will make this a great agreement, not just something that unifies the friendship, but that also embodies what friendship is about, whether it's the city of Los Angeles and the way that we can assist. We've begun discussions with your government and the Rotary Clubs, which are here in Los Angeles and in Hollywood and other parts, of projects that we can promote in San Salvador for healthcare, for education, for youth, to make sure that that Sister City Agreement has true meaning and content. When we look as well at the exchange between organizations like Homies Unidos, which work with gang members here, and also those in San Salvador, I remember meeting one gang member who was deported to San Salvador, and he'd never lived there before. He grew up here in Silver Lake, and he said, "I feel like Los Angeles is my home. San Salvador is now my home too, and it is certainly my heritage, but I feel like a lost man between two places." A Sister City Agreement makes sure that there is no lost man, no lost woman, that we are one people, that though there may be a border and that there may be space between our two countries, that it doesn't feel like that, whether it's somebody who's a first-generation migrant or somebody whose family has been here for three or four generations. So thank you for giving us hope today out of tragedy. Thank you for your presence, and thank you to Mayor Han, the entire City Council, for making this agreement happen. And like I said, let us make sure that it isn't just an agreement, but that it has living, breathing, meeting each and every day. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Those were very eloquent words. I had the opportunity, when I worked for Mayor Bradley, and Carlos and I were young then, some 20 years ago, when we created the Mayor's Advisory Committee on Central America and to talk about ways in which we could exchange ideas, to support individuals who are here from Central America, and to learn about the cultural differences. And that was an exciting time for me to understand the importance of the countries that we have across this world, and we can't talk about Sister Cities without talking about Tom Labange, who has led that effort here in Los Angeles and expressed how important it is. It is a historic day for us and one in which we can support the Sister City program. I had the pleasure of meeting the mayor at Councilmember Garcetti's home when he came to visit the last time. So I think we stand here today, colleagues, and all of us I know are going to support this today, but we want to send the message that Sister City, being a Sister City is not just something that's on paper. It is about the relationship. It's about supporting each other in the tough times, it's supporting each other in our economies. I know in the devastating earthquake in 2001 and the relationship that we have with city of Los Angeles, who experienced some tragedies here in Los Angeles, we are here to stand today to say we welcome you as part of the Los Angeles family. We welcome and support so many of you in this room, Isabel, who have been fighting the good fight for many years to establish that relationship, both informally and now today formally, in a Sister City. So I stand in support of this resolution today in creating a Sister City with San Salvador El Salvador. So thank you all, those of you in the room who supported today, and we look forward to a very, I think, important and interactive relationship in the days and years and months to come. Thank you very much.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I am very proud and very excited on this day where we're making San Salvador our Sister City, and I'm very proud that one of the top legislative aides in my council office, Jenny Chavez, her mother was born in San Salvador, and her grandmother still lives there. So I have a Salvadoran American in a top position in my office, and she, isn't that great? And isn't she beautiful? And I'm very pleased today, and as was already said, our Sister City programs are so beautiful and so wonderful. I've been privileged to lead a Sister City delegation to Bordeaux, and last year, I was the first official city visit to Split, Croatia, and it is so wonderful, the things that we can talk about, helping each other on, whether it's educational or cultural. We're working with each other to make sure that our people visit your city and that your people continue to visit our city. And so this is a great day, and we love the Salvadoran people in Los Angeles. They have contributed so much to who we are, to the kind of city we are today. And Eric just told me, I think his time was up before he had an opportunity to say this, but when he visited San Salvador and went to the museum, he was able to see for himself an adjourning motion that this city council sent to San Salvador to remember the priests who were murdered there. This city council all stood and adjourned the city council meeting in memory of the priests that were murdered in San Salvador. We are already connected, and we welcome you, and we think this is a beautiful addition to our Sister City program. Thank you.
Mr. Villarrealosa.
También quiero dar la bienvenida al alcalde Rivas Zamora, al cónsul general Mauricio Ruano, los concejales Abrego y Contreras, y a todos los que están aquí con nosotros. I want to say also, of course, and acknowledge Salif and Sana and all of the good people who are here, Nick Pacheco and Ed Reyes, who played the lead role, Councilmember Garcetti, who has been to El Salvador on a number of occasions and has been a big advocate for this effort. For those of us who, over the years, have had a relationship with this community, from the very days of those, of that civil war that you spoke of so eloquently, know that the many contributions of this great community. And what is particularly, in my mind, important is that while in the '80s, this was a community looking south because of that civil war and US intervention and all of those issues. Today, this is a community that looks within as well. And this Sister City relationship is an opportunity for us to connect two communities of Salvadorans, one who live in El Salvador and the other who live here. It's an opportunity for us to acknowledge the tremendous relationships that we've engendered over the last 25 years, an opportunity for us to celebrate the incredible contributions of this great community. When you look at LA and what it's all about, it is about the Salvadoran community and the Mexican community and the Korean and all of the other communities that make LA so great. And this Sister City relationship is so important to formalizing those contributions, so important to formalize the exchanges of culture and economics that is so important to San Salvador and also to Los Angeles. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to welcome you all here. I want to congratulate you for your great work and for this great achievement. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to rise also and say thank you to both of our mayors here assembled in the chamber today, and all of the friends who are sharing this momentous occasion with us. And I want to say that the Salvadoran community is also well-represented in the Ninth Council District through expressions of great love of family, great advocacy in the schools, tremendous community activism, and I can trace my relationships with members of the community back many, many years, to Isabel and to Carlos. And Carlos, you still look young to me, no matter what anybody says. You're still young in my book. That the tremendous personal histories of so many of the people in this room who have come from El Salvador to the United States and have been able to teach so many of us about the ability to recover and to triumph over man's inhumanity to man is the greatest lesson of all that you have shared with all of us. And for that, I would like to say a tremendous thank you, and a great, great day in our history of our city. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to Los Angeles. I was on Rules and Elections, and we discussed this. I know Carlos has been there for a long time fighting for this. It goes back a number of years where this was attempted. The number of Sister Cities that we have relationships with is not that great. We look at all the cities around this world, and it's a very special relationship that we established. And looking at the overflow audience that we have today, the standing-room-only audience that we have today shows the support that you have in the city of Los Angeles, that you have from the residents, not only from San Salvador, residents of the city of Los Angeles, from other parts of the world. And I remember a few years ago, I rode in a parade commending San Salvador in downtown Los Angeles. There was a parade, and I think it's an annual parade, and all the love and the support of the people from San Salvador that came out to show their love, respect for what we have in this city and the relationship that's been established. So I also want to offer my congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor. I was given a copy of the website, and you look exactly like your picture on the website, so which is positive. It's positive. Sometimes you look at a website picture, it makes you look younger. You are young, energetic, enthusiastic, and this is you, a man who's on the run, who's making things happen, and this relationship that we're building is going to continue commerce, continue relationships, and continue for the good people in San Salvador, as well as the good people here in the city of the angels. So God bless you, and thank you for being here, and thank you all for turning out for today.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Other members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's prepare for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, everybody. And we'll send this item forthwith.
Mayor Rivas Zamora, and I would like to invite all of you to come back on Friday afternoon at 2:00. We will have the festivities that we postponed today, and we certainly hope that all the members of the council will join us, as well as all the people who are in the crowd. We'll be doing that on Friday at 2:00 in the City Hall Rotunda.
Thank you very much.
Bueno, darle las gracias al consejo, al presidente, por esta oportunidad tan grande que nos dan a los salvadoreños y a los angelinos, para que vivamos en un solo mundo, un mundo que nos pertenece a todos y a todas. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. And para traducir la ceremonia, la ceremonia que habíamos planeado para ahora y la celebración que hemos, habíamos planeado para ahora, se llevarán a cabo este viernes a las dos de la tarde. Todos están invitados. Nos vemos entonces. Muchísimas gracias, felicidades a todos. Want to thank everybody for being here. We hope to see you Friday at 2:00. Colleagues, let's now adjourn this special session and take a two-minute recess before taking up the balance of the regular agenda items. I'm sorry, as we're also breaking, I know there's a number of council generals who have joined us for today's hearing and festivities. I want to thank you all for being here as well. I want to thank you all for being here as well. Members of the City Council, our five minutes are up. If I can ask you to please return to their seats. We do have three items remaining on the desk, and we understand that there's a couple of council members who need to leave early. So we'd love to take care of council business before we start losing council members. Mr. Cárdenas, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Labange, Mr. Ludlow, Ms. Misakowski, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Race, Mr. Smith, Mr. Villarrosa, Mr. Wyson, Mr. Zine, we're all present. Fifteen members present and accounted for. Sergeants, if I can ask for your help in restoring order to council chambers so we can resume with our council meeting. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next items before council are Items 21, 22, and 23. Does council wish to take those three matters together?
Yes, without objection, colleagues, we'll take Items 21, 22, and 23 concurrently. We may indeed have separate votes on these items, but for purposes of discussion, I believe it's appropriate to do so. Let me recognize Councilmember Misakowski first to speak on this item. But, Ms. Misakowski, before you get started, may I ask Chief Pamatre, Chief Bratton to come forward. For those of you who are in the audience here, members of the public, if I can ask you to please either take a seat or to please excuse yourself into the rotunda area of City Hall. We're trying to get back to business here. Members, are we ready? Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, obviously, I think everyone is aware of what these issues are today. Just for purposes of presenting it to you and clarification on the three items, Item 21 was the consideration by both the Budget and Finance Committee and Public Safety on the motion that Councilmember Ludlow had put in about a parcel tax, a $40 a year parcel tax. We had a CLA/CAO report that encompassed all of the items, 21, 22, and 23. 21 having to do with the parcel tax, the way the committees acted on that was to not move forward on the parcel tax, but to incorporate and ask the CAO and the CLA to incorporate into the proposal for a half-cent sales tax a portion, a $30 million a year guarantee out of a sales tax to go to the intervention kind of programs and prevention, and those programs that Mr. Ludlow's motions had asked for, so that would be a continuity of stream. But 21 is essentially a receive-and-file and report-back on the incorporation and the rest. Item 22 was the motion that we took part of the CAO report dealing with, I think it was Mr. Smith's motion, which had dealt with the issue of looking at the state capability, the offering that the state is making to allow cities to bond for the reimbursement money of the VLF that had been held back by the state for a few years. I think it's somewhere in the range of $600,000 to $65 million. All the committees, I believe unanimously, agreed and concurred in Item 22 that we, the city, should avail ourselves of that availability of funds and use the funds in some measure to start up the hiring of, at our police academies, new police recruits starting in the beginning of the year as soon as we can access that money. We deferred until later because there were two proposals. One was to access all the money and put it in a trust fund for that purpose. The other was to access part of the money for that purpose that we could accommodate in this first year and use the rest to look at the other budget issues that we will face in the spring. We are not making a decision today as to how to use the money. The decision today on Item 22 is to access the money, get the money into the city treasury, and then work towards it with a guarantee that a portion of the money, at the very least, will be the city's, what I'd call it, "good faith" money to start the program of hiring additional police officers in the city, which is the premise of all three reports. Item 23 is the report that there was a split. Budget and Finance Committee majority did recommend putting on the ballot in May the request to go back to the voters of the City of Los Angeles and ask for the half-cent sales tax for public safety items. As part of that request, and that the motion today is to request the city attorney to draft that language, to go on the ballot and come back to us on or before February 11th, which is the date that we need to give the instruction to the city attorney. Included in that, as the CAO report recommended, is a requirement of an oversight committee, an 11-member citizen oversight committee. It will be, and the majority recommended, a special tax, which is the higher threshold, it's a two-thirds vote that is needed to pass it. But I'd like to remind everybody that in the City of Los Angeles, 64% of the voters in November said yes to a sales tax countywide. In any other election, in any other realm, we would all consider 64% a landslide, a mandate. And that's why I feel as strongly as I do in representing the majority of the committee that going back again to the voters with that overwhelming a commitment, with arguably a tighter controlled campaign, a more specifically controlled campaign, an oversight committee, and the ability of our two chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief, to go out and talk about what it will mean to them, what it will mean to the firefighters in terms of that extra increment of new guaranteed resource money guaranteed to go to these specific programs, the police department to go out, working with the oversight committee to guarantee new police officers in every division of this city, which are badly needed. Members, I know that we appreciate the efforts of the police department and what has been done in reducing crime, but we also know how thin our department is, not just in overall numbers, but how thin they are stretched. And at times, for instance, in my areas in West L.A., we just heard last night that the 240 officers in West L.A. have now been reduced to 211 officers, in part because other areas of the city need the officers to go and fight more specific outspread of crime. And that's the way this department has to manage its very, very thin resources. But if we can guarantee in every division of the city, those officers will be more officers specifically guaranteed on both a maintenance of effort in terms of a threshold of officers, but more specifically, what I'm going to call sort of the maintenance of effort at every specific division, so that we will have certain guarantees in every area of this city that they will see new officers to be able to do all of the things we talked about, not only fighting crime, which is first and foremost the most important thing they do, but we have all around this council passed laws which we call the quality-of-life laws, which, when police officers had the time to spend more attention on those kinds of issues that our communities are asking for, all assortment of things. This is what allows, can allow us to use dedicated resources to build this department in a way that we've talked about for a very, very long time but never been able to achieve. And members, it's not for the lack of trying. I will tell you that I was a little put out recently when I've heard others talking about this in this realm, in the candidates forums that are out there, saying, "We don't need new revenue. We can do it just by tightening our belt. We can do it at economy scale." Members, you know in your hearts, we have been trying. This council is dedicated, this mayor has been dedicated, to finding the way to hire new police officers. Have we been saying we're willing to shut down street services, to shut down libraries, to shut down other things? That's the only thing that is now on the table. It's not economy. Economy might get us a million dollars. Last year, there was an economy proposed to say consolidate five departments in this city. Our five rather low-cost departments, but their cost right now administratively is higher than it need be if we had taken the consolidation effort. This council did not take that consolidation and said, "We would never and we could not." Members, those are the reality points. We've got to find new revenue. 64% of our people said this was the way to try to find it. I think we need to go back to them with guarantees, with certainty, and that's what your committee recommendation was out of the joint committee meetings with a public hearing. And I would absolutely like to ask the CAO to come to table, ask our police chief, our fire chief, and a CAO to present this, particularly at the CAO side, on what the CAO learned from going out in the neighborhood councils for the support that is out there from our neighborhood councils to try this. Is it absolute? Is it unanimous? Of course not. But was there the sentiment from our communities through the neighborhood council, not only in the meetings, but in the surveys and the questionnaires that they responded to? The answer was yes. Our people, in talking to us on broad cross-section, the majority were saying, "Yes, we should do this." So that's what I'm recommending. It would be receive-and-file 21, vote yes on 22 for the VLF, and then vote yes on 23 for the special election in May. Ask the city attorney to draft it.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. Recognize the mayor's here and understand he wishes to address the council. Let's take the mayor now. And, members, so you know, I have Mr. Smith, Mr. Ludlow, and Mr. Reyes on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Innovative policing strategies and renewed emphasis on quality-of-life crimes have had remarkable success here in the City of Los Angeles over the last two years. We should not lose that momentum. When 64% of the voters in this city said they were willing to pay a little more to have safety in their city, that's a message we can't ignore. And I don't want to lose that momentum. I don't want to ask the people of the city to wait. Certainly, we want to put politics aside in this debate. I certainly urge the council to support the motion by Councilman Smith to draw down on funds that we fought for, that are owed to us by the State of California, that were due in '06, '07. That is helpful, but it doesn't get us to where we need to go. We need an ongoing revenue stream. A few days ago, in the L.A. Times, they pointed out that a half-cent sales tax in the City of Los Angeles would add two cents to a double-double combo at In-N-Out, $2 to the cost of a high-end iPod music recording device. It is a small price to pay for safety. Certainly, the other day, when I was with Mayor Daley, Mayor of Chicago, who, by the way, his sales tax is 8.75%, and they are an economic powerhouse in the Midwest, and no one would doubt that, I asked him how many police officers does he have in the City of Chicago. With 2.9 million residents in the City of Chicago, almost 900,000 less than we have in the City of Los Angeles, he has 13,600 police officers, over 4,000 more police officers. If you look at all the major cities around the world, we have been underpoliced for a long time. And I believe we've been asking our police department to do too much with too little for too long. We can't ask the people of Los Angeles to wait, even if this isn't something that you agree with personally, even if you intend, if this is on the ballot, to vote against it. Give the voters the chance to vote on it. It's a vote for democracy. Give the voters the opportunity to say whether or not they want to invest in a safer city. The language that's before you would indicate that in addition to hiring over 1,200 officers at LAPD, that we would also be able to have some of that money for the fire department, who did such an excellent job, by the way, Chief. who did such an excellent job, by the way, Chief, I want to commend you again for the work your department did this morning. But also, and this, I think, is a thing that excites a lot of people, our initiative, unlike others, would actually set aside a percentage of this money for intervention, prevention, after-school programs, things that will make a difference in the lives of our young people. We may not have this opportunity again. We shouldn't ask the voters to wait. Again, give them the opportunity to vote on it. Certainly urge you to ask the city attorney to draft the language and bring that back before you so we can put this on the ballot. Let's not lose momentum. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to make it very clear, there is not one person in this chamber today that doesn't want to hire more police. This is not about hiring more police. This is about the way we go about doing this. Every single one of us are committed to finding ways to hire more police and assist the fire department any way we can. So this is not about the police department. This is about public policy on how we go about doing it. I want to make that very clear. I think it's very important. I consider the attempt to come back to the voters, again, not public policy but public folly. First of all, we gave them a chance, Mr. Mayor. We gave them just a few months ago, and they said no. Are we going to be the kind of politicians that stand up over and over and over again and say, "If you don't give us what we want, we're going to pound you over and over and over again with initiative and referendum after referendum until we get what we want, and that's a tax increase?" I stood with the mayor and this council, which was united in that attempt to get a countywide tax, which, in my opinion, makes sense, and I'll tell you why. Because it doesn't make the City of LA an island in the county with the highest tax. You know, there's only one other city in the State of California that has an 8.75 tax, the City of Avalon, which is truly an island. Are we going to make Los Angeles an island in the county of 87 other cities with the highest tax, particularly when we fought for five years for tax reform for business? We just granted a $90 million tax reform package to cut business taxes, and are we going to stand up here two months later and say, "We're going to re-implement a $200 million tax on business"? That is folly, not policy, and we shouldn't be going down that route. I am very concerned that this would be a loss that we couldn't afford to take, because if we want to see a countywide tax, which we all support and which we believe makes sense, if we lose this election, which I will explain why we will, then we're at great risk of never getting a chance for years to come of getting anything passed, because the voters would just be so skeptical of us that they will not believe us when we go back again and again and again. So make your statement, which we did in November, we lost that, let's look to another way. And I have proposed another way that is without taxes, that gets us through the academy, trains police officers for the next 18 months, fully utilizes our police academy to its maximum capacity without raising taxes, gets us down the road where we can come back as a council and look at our financial condition in the two-year budget from now, and say, "Where are we now? What can we effectuate that will get us more cops? Can we be more efficient? Can we find other resources? Or is another tax really a legitimate option at that time?" But if we lose this election, we will lose that opportunity. We will never get the confidence back of the people, and I don't want to take that chance. Mr. Padilla, in his eloquent statement before the two committees, said very clear that he supported the concept initially. He was having reservations. The reservation he had is that we have a divided city on this issue. A year ago, this council voted 15-0 to support Prop. A on the ballot. We were united. Our business communities were united. Our neighborhood councils were united. This city was united on this proposal. Today, that is not the case. This council is divided. This city is divided. Business organizations are lining up in opposition now. Neighborhood councils are divided, and I would challenge the remark that neighborhood councils looked at and liked it. When the neighborhood councils began to look at, they were not shown the alternatives. They were shown no other option. If you want democracy to happen, let them hear all sides of the argument, and that was wrong and that shouldn't have happened. So to say neighborhood councils supporting it is not factual. Neighborhood councils, I've had a lot of contact with a lot of them that are lining up in opposition to this now. I see my time is over, so I'll just add to this. I have brought forth an opportunity that I believe is a logical extension of where we should be in public policy. It utilizes money that is coming back to us from the State of California. It is not one-time money. It is a reimbursement of a break in our funding sources. It is an opportunity to utilize that money without a tax increase, to keep our academy full for the next year, year and a half, and allow us to continue to put the officers on the street. Make a major commitment that will bring us at least 250 to 300 officers without a tax increase. Get us down the road where we can really see what the financial condition of the City of LA is, what the financial condition of the State of California is, and make a logical policy decision at that time without interrupting it. The biggest problem with the half-cent sales tax is, folks, you don't get the money and time to keep your academy open. Let me repeat that. There will be a break in our police academy of at least six months where there will not be allowed to hire officers using that money alone because of the way it comes into the city. And so it is not a logical extension. It's not going to keep officers on the street. It's going to break the flow of officers. And then the big question is if it will pass at all. Since I made my proposal in November, the State California League of Cities has come up with a proposal that 190 cities have already subscribed to to do just that very thing. LA should join that gold rush, I think, and utilize the money that we are entitled to. Give us police officers, put them on the street now without waiting, and do it without a tax increase, and give us the time we need to really assess where we are since Prop. 1A. I will talk again later. Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. If I thought that great speeches were going to change the outcome of today's vote, I would have stayed up all night and prepared a speech, but I don't think that's going to happen. I want to do just, I want to do a couple of technical things. I want to just, first of all, say thank you to Councilmember Msikowski for seconding my motion on item 21, and I want to thank Councilmember Garcetti for keeping it alive in committee and for the work that everyone did on that. After looking at what's happening here, my interest in trying to provide funding for intervention programs, after-school programs, which I think almost every member of this council has, with unanimity, spoken in support of trying to find creative ways, that was my interest in putting a parcel tax on the ballot. There was good numbers that showed support for it. But at the end of the day, colleagues, I think we need to really sort of focus this discussion and put our best hand forward and have the best debate possible. So without much further ado, I'm going to move that we, as I think the Chair of Public Safety indicated, combine the two initiatives into one move, and I shouldn't say move, but speak in support of the committee recommendation. And on item 21, move that we receive and file this, if I could get a second on that. And then, secondly, move that we amend the Budget and Finance Committee report on item number 23 to instruct the city attorney to combine these two ordinances. And I'm going to go as far as to indicate specifically that we put 15% of the funds generated by the half-cent sales tax for the intervention, prevention, and after-school programs with a guarantee on that. I want to just take a moment, so that's a, I would move that as well, if I could get a second on that. The other thing that I would just add is a real heartfelt thank you to all the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, the Fire Department, and all the agencies that are out there doing a lot of work on the issue of trying to make this city safer, particular our two chiefs that are here. I've spent way too many hours in my district in the middle of the night looking at the death and mayhem that is happening. I just wanted to say one final comment, which is probably a very politically incorrect thing to do, but with all due respect to people that are saying, "Don't put this on the ballot." When you look at the numbers, starting with my own district, more people supported the half-cent sales tax than they did supporting me when I ran. There isn't a single member of this council, maybe one, whose district didn't vote more for the half-cent sales tax in November than they did for us as council members. Point made.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. This has been one of those issues that is personal, but I do know if you read some of the verbiage around these walls, it talks about being reasonable, talking about laws and talking about pragmatism. And I hear this notion of a public folly. But quite frankly, council members, the public folly in this city is when a person can stand on their porch while fear of being shot. The public folly in this city is when we pump millions and millions of dollars of transit funds, build rail lines, improve our corridors and our businesses, but you don't see people out at night because of fear of being killed or shot or robbed, because we don't have police. That's the public folly. Now, I can share with you that in parts of this city, that is a reality that happens day in and day out every night. And I can show you on a map statistically where other parts of this city, that is not even a concept in their mind, because it's not part of their existence. It is, it's a reality that does not happen. So the issue here of where the money comes from is a true subject matter that speaks to how does this pie get bigger? And I have really looked at this very hard, and I don't see no other way. And I would hope that the mayoral candidates can appreciate. It's not my desire to put everyone down or disrespect candidates for being candidates, but we cannot make this an issue that in the long run ends up hurting all parts of the city. You know, today, we have to extend the reward for Sean Williams. Sean Williams was shot visiting his grandmother in Cypress Park, and all he was doing was driving back home. So we are running out of time. For some family members, the time is up. They are burying their children. We see this over and over again at this podium, and every time we see that, let's understand what part of the city needs that police. This is a citywide issue. It's a cancer that has started in certain parts, but I can guarantee you that cancer will spread throughout the city if we do not pay attention now. So I urge you to support this. Let the voters decide, and if it doesn't pass, then we must work harder to truly create good public policy. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm glad that I came after Mr. Reyes, because I know that we feel very similarly in the emotional toll and the impact that the problems we deal with. I was at an event the other day. I walked in the room, and someone who lives in a more affluent part of the city said to me, "There's no way I'm going to support that initiative." And I said, "Okay, why is that?" And he proceeded to tell me, and then when I responded as follows, I said, "You have no idea how much general city purposes money that I have spent over the last several years just helping people bury their children because they've been shot to death. I can tell you stories upon stories, the little boy on the bike in the alley who was shot numerous times, standing there with his mother after the suspects were arrested and listening to the police tell her, 'They wanted you to know that they didn't shoot him because they thought he was a gang member.'" And I'm standing there, waiting for the rest of it to come. There was no rest of it to come. There was no explanation. Or to be able to communicate with the parents who, father drove the family to the store in the neighborhood, baby strapped in the car seat next to her little brother, gang fought, crossfire, the child was killed in her car seat while her mother was in the store and her father was at the wheel. These are the kinds of problems that we have to face. It is not a theoretical or an esoteric discussion for us. Yes, public policy it is, and we should have a vigorous, vigorous, and candid, and honest, and brutal debate about it. Let me, let me be brutal for a second and just bring it home. Let's keep it in perspective. I'm tired of going to funerals where the casket has to be half-closed because somebody's face has to be pasted back together so that the relatives can have one last goodbye before they leave this earth altogether. That's not right, and we shouldn't have to spend so much money having to help people bury their loved ones. So I urge everyone to be real, to be pragmatic, to be in this time, not in the future, because the time is very much now for all of us, and this is not a theoretical discussion for many of us here in this room. And I want to move ahead. It almost passed the last time. All I would say is run a better campaign the next time. We got it at 64%. We don't need more commercials with a woman on her knees screaming, "He's coming to get me." I'm not sure what message that is. You need to have the people who are affected the most by the need to have more officers on the street tell the story, like we did in Proposition O. Let the people tell the story about why they feel they need more police and more help in their neighborhoods.
Ms. Gruehl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Those are two remarks hard to follow. I think, and I agree with Councilmember Greg Smith, who said, you know, the question that we're facing today in communities of Los Angeles, we all know we need more firefighters, we need more police officers, we need more ambulances, and we need an improved 911 system. That is not in dispute before us today. Compared to other cities, we've all heard these statistics, New York, Chicago, Philadelphia, Los Angeles has half the number of police officers. On the average, it takes 7.7 minutes to respond to a crime in my neighborhood that I share with Councilmember Cardenas and Councilmember Padilla in the East Valley. And thanks to the leadership of the Chief of Police, that has gone down from 11 minutes by the use of Code 3 and the improvements that have been made there. Thousands of 911 calls go unanswered as quickly as we would like to have them go, and after 6:00 PM, 17 fire stations stop offering ambulance services. Seventeen. There are 60,000 gangs in the City of Los Angeles, and we have 9,000 police officers. It's clear, as Mr. Smith said, we all agree, we need more police officers. But the question before us today is, how do we get there? I support Mr. Smith's motion. I seconded it, or was one of the seconds when it was introduced, and support and feel the two are not mutually exclusive. We set up a trust fund to be able to identify efficiencies that would help us. But I've often said the importance of looking at, in some form of revenue, that will allow us to get not only the 1,200 but to 3,000 officers, and it's going to have to be a combination of those. Many of you in this chambers know, and many of my friends from the business community out there who I've spoken to, this was not an easy decision as we stand here today. Each of us have had to thought, think about, what is important? What can we do to improve police services in Los Angeles? And so there is no simple way to balance that, and we do spend a large amount of money on police services and fire services in Los Angeles. I think, you know, as I was talking to my staff and as someone who championed the efforts along and alongside and supportive of Councilmember Cardenas and Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Blanche and many in this room, we believe that it is important to keep businesses here. And so several months ago, when this came up, because I did not support putting on the March ballot, I had questions. I said, "One, can it pass? Two, is it going to impact our businesses? And three, what's it going to be used for?" And until we can answer those questions, I'm not ready to put something on the ballot. But one of the most compelling reasons, and I don't know if the chief even knows this, is the chief said in one of the meetings, and he didn't strong-arm me, and met with both Pamatry and Chief Brennan, but the chief said to me, "Give me the chance to ask the voters and to state my case." Now, that's a hard thing to say no to. It's a hard thing to say no to putting something on the ballot. In my district, if you look at the map, you know, we don't call it the blue and red states, but I've got blue and orange and yellow, different colors, on who voted for this. And I always say, you know, sometimes when you vote for something and you get both sides mad at you, you may be doing the right thing. And so I'm standing here today to saying, "Let's ask the city attorney to draft that language. Let's make sure that places like the San Fernando Valley, which we always want to make sure get their fair share." We stood in this room just a few years ago and voted to put secession on the ballot. Now, many of you in this room were opposed to secession, but you voted to put it on the ballot, because you wanted to give the voters an opportunity to vote. That's the same thing we're doing today. I believe that my constituency will be diverse in their opinions, but they will have the opportunity to have that debate, and I think that is critically important. And to stand up here today is difficult, because I'm not standing with all of my friends necessarily, but what I am standing up here today is saying, "I believe..." all of my friends necessarily, but what I am standing up here today is saying, "I believe in democracy. I believe in the importance of giving people a right to vote, and I believe that we need more police officers and firefighters and 9/11 that operates, and that we have to give the voters an opportunity to say, 'It's worth it to me to pay that half-cent tax,' or maybe it's not." But I believe that it is important for us to put it on the ballot, and I think that they deserve the right to decide for themselves. Thank you.
Mr. LaBange. Or, excuse me, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I stand here today to echo some of my colleagues' comments that we today should vote to let this be drafted by the city attorney. And hopefully, I, I hope that we vote ultimately to put a half-cent sales tax on the ballot in May for the voters to decide for themselves whether or not they want to invest a half of a penny every time they buy something for the public safety goals of the city of Los Angeles. And Mr. Smith, with all due respect, the voters have spoken. They have said yes. They have said yes. They have said yes over and over again. More people have said yes than have said no. And as Councilwoman Ludlow said, every one of our districts said yes. The majority of people in all of our districts voted yes on Measure A. Some, Antonio's district, were as high as almost 70%. Councilwoman Grul, your district was almost 2 to 1, said yes. My district was one of the lowest, and it was 64% said yes. We are willing to invest a half a cent. And what does a half a cent really mean? It means one and a half cents, a little bit on your Starbucks coffee in the morning. It means three cents, as my brother said, on a, on a double-double cheeseburger. If you took, if you had the $60 dinner and went to the movie and bought popcorn and Cokes, it would be 30 cents. If you splurged on a $100 DVD player, it would be 50 cents. If someone went out and bought a $300 suit, it would be $1.50. What about those big purchases that we're worried about people going to other places to buy? Okay, a big purchase of a $600 refrigerator, $3. An $18,000 car, $90. That is not enough for people to try to drive miles to avoid those taxes. And what do we get? We get 1,200 new police officers. We have enough money to train 144 new paramedics and hire 36 new firefighters. We have $30 million for something I believe in very much, and that's gang prevention and gang intervention programs. That is what the voters are willing to do. And you know why the half-cent sales tax makes sense? It makes sense because everyone pays for it. And that means everyone who comes into our city, colleagues, and shops at our shops, eats in our restaurants, spends money in our city, and then goes back to their own towns, they help pay for it, because guess what? They're the first people to call 911. They're the first people to expect our paramedics to show up if they ever need them. So this is a way to capture everyone's half of a penny to invest in the long-term goals of public safety. And you can say what you want about the survey of neighborhood councils, but we have a community impact statement today, the only one, I'm proud to say, from the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. And every one of our neighborhood councils should be turning in these community impact statements, so that we know how you feel about these measures. And they said overwhelmingly that they support this, as did every neighborhood council in this city made public safety their priority. They want us to hire more cops. And you know what? I know my time's also up. I want to be an island. I want to be an island of safety. I want to be an island of security. I want our city to be an island that shines brightly so that we can attract more businesses and we can make people finally feel safe in the second-largest city in America. I want to be an island.
Mr. LaBange.
Thank you very much, members of San Salvador. Our sister city was here today and spoke of that. Last night, the World Affairs Council had a benefit for all the countries affected by the tsunami. And I recalled in the speech from the Malaysian Council General, "The Malaysian government acted swiftly to provide assistance to minimize the suffering of the affected victims." We're not acting swiftly, members. We should put this on the ballot. We should truly put it on the ballot. And we're fooling ourselves, because Santa Clarita spends 30% more for their power because of Edison, 60% if they're a market. Jack, I got to tell you, other areas play more in their power, so it's not a business deal. We all supported the stormwater, 50 to nothing for stormwater, 50 to nothing for stormwater. And let's support people. Chief Parks, then, before Councilman, when Jan Perry was here, when I just got here, there was a, a young child, five years old, shot at Trinity Park. We needed more support for the police department. We needed it then, we need it now. Your former boss, Riordan, Richard Riordan, fought hard on his $10,000, $10,000 person plan. Never got there. This gives a vote to the people. This gives a vote to the people to say half-cent sales. And Mr. CAO, our power costs for Los Angeles are that much lower that it's not going to affect businesses, correct? You support me in that? Have you looked at that?
As far as, as far as the increasing officers and how the impact on--
The power cost for Los Angeles, you're thinking your business is going to run away. It's not going to run away because we got power that's less expensive. 60% less for markets, 25% office buildings, 30% for manufacturing. That all is part of that. So I just wanted to say, and my friends from the east side of the council chambers, who I just tried to direct some fever to, it's important that we step up, because there's going to be incidents again at 8:45 in the morning when a man opens a store and someone accosts them with hoods on. There's going to be incidents again where people are carjacked, there's an incident again. And Martin, I support the 15%, but I'd like to ask the CAO, what would 20% be? What would 20% be? So if you could look at that for the intervention, as you come back to us on that, okay? Because I think it's real important, because as Chief Bratton says, you're not going to stop this just with law enforcement, it's a partnership. And I also want to make sure our fire department gets the important efforts. I saw it firsthand this morning at 6:55 when I arrived at that horrific scene in Atwater Village. All of that is extremely important. Members, I think it's real important, because for so many years, we fought for this battle to try to approve the Los Angeles Police Department, to keep the maintenance of funds, so it sticks what it is now in the commitment, and get the additional officers that's needed for the city of Los Angeles. I thank you, and I wanted to express myself, and I feel better than I expressed myself for those who may feel different than I, because unfortunately, there'll be other tragedies in the cities that we may not be able to respond to unless we give it a vote to the people and get that necessary improvement for all of Los Angeles, every neighborhood in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, where'd he go? Oh, he left, okay. All right, I wanted to show respect, because I know that he's been working hard on this along with the chief, from the fire department, chief from the police department. I represent a district that has felt, many, many years, they've been short-changed, San Fernando Valley. And looking at Measure A, my district was number two in failure. Councilmember Smith was number one. And it failed in eight out of the 15 council districts. I know that some people think it's all about politics. Well, I think it's about its public safety. There's three representatives on this side of the room that have served in law enforcement for many years. Well, prosecutor too. We got three of law enforcement, one prosecutor. I think it's interesting that we all support law enforcement, we all support public safety. Two of us are reserve officers. We go out and work twice a month alongside our colleagues in the police department to try and provide public safety to the city. So we clearly know the desperate need. We know what happened this morning and how 30-some paramedic units and ambulances and fire trucks and helicopters were dispatched to the tragedy. We've seen this. We've seen the dead bodies. We've seen the people in crisis, and we know we need more officers. When I look at Councilmember Smith's proposal, it brings us the resources now. It doesn't bring us resources next January, which is what the half-cent sales tax will do. It brings us resources right now. And what I propose, in supporting that, along with some of my colleagues, is that we follow through with that. We have surveyed every neighborhood council in my district. I got six neighborhood councils, six communities. Every single one of them said, "No, we don't want any more sales tax." And what I find in my mail that comes in a couple days ago from the city of Los Angeles is a wonderful greeting. Notice a proposed increase in the sewer service charge for the city of Los Angeles. And it gives the schedule from 2005 to 2008. And for the typical monthly residential bill, it's going from $2287 to $2997 in 2008. That's what the people in the valley are saying, is you give us a sewer sanitation increase, you give us 11% water-to-power increase, now you want to give us another increase. That's what they're screaming about. Clearly, we need more officers. The Smith, Zine, Grul proposal, and I don't know who else signed on to that, Greg, Jack, Antonio Villagosa, that's a proposal that gives the chief the resources, the funding he needs to get the job done now. We're not saying we're not going to help with law enforcement. We're not saying we're going to say no to more officers. If we were to say that, we'd all be hypocrites. We're saying we have the funds, we're going to push that forward, and you're going to get the money to hire the officers. And I know that you can only put so many through the academy. From the time they sign up to the time they graduate is going to probably be 12 months. So we give the chief the funding, we give him the resources, and he's done a great job. We talked to officers on the street, morale has increased, crime is down, arrests have gone up. It works. So the community that I represent has said clearly, we've been short-changed for years, and that's why when you looked at secession, the valley was so strongly in support of secession, we have representatives here whose valley vote who's saying, "You know what? We haven't given up the cause. We still want representation, and we want to have our voices heard." Well, the voices in the San Fernando Valley are very clear. They're saying, "Enough with the taxes, give us the services we're paying for." And if you look at the million-dollar homes that we all represent in the valley in certain districts, those people have to hire the security companies, have to pay for the alarms. They're not getting what they're paying for in resources. And I know the chief has a difficult task with other parts of the city with crime escalating and the gang violence and the tragedies that occur, but what about the people who are paying bills and not getting service, who've been complaining, complaining for years? I represent those people. At the same time, I say, "We have the funds, we have the measure to help the public safety personnel, put more firefighters, put more police officers," as is the wish. And I look at history, I just want to take a couple more minutes, if you'll just indulge. My staff gave me some documents, and this was the city taxes that were proposed to hire public safety. In 1981, special tax to increase sworn personnel, 8,500, that failed. June 4, 1985, hire 1,000 additional police officers, that failed. June 87, hire 300 officers in specified areas of the city, that failed by 85%. November 1992, hire 1,000 officers to implement the Christopher Commission recommendations, that failed. And April 93, hire 1,000 officers to implement the Christopher Commission, Commission recommendations, that failed. There's been a long history failing to accomplish what we need to have the tax increased. So when we get this from the city of Los Angeles, Department of Public Works, "Hey, folks, your rates are going up for sewer sanitation charge, your water and power rates are going up, and we need public safety, and we have a solution for public safety, we have the dollars to put into public safety without increasing the tax a half percent." That's what I support. And the community, maybe Ms. Hahn's district feels differently about it, but the community that I represent has been very clear, because we surveyed every single neighborhood council, and every single neighborhood council said, "No." The business community has said, "No. We have the resources to help our fire chief, help our police chief, and help this community." And if we weren't doing that, then we would be subject to criticism, but we have the dollars to put forward. Mr. Fujioka, I met with this morning, he supports that, taking that 60-some million dollars, or whatever the total is, and to put it in that trust fund, to give it to the police department, to give it to the fire department, they can do the job without increasing taxes. And to the business community, we passed, and it was two colleagues, Garcetti and Grul, that worked hard. And I remember the news conferences, and I remember the campaign that took place, "Let's help businesses, let's reduce taxes." So now we're saying to the business community, "We took care of you last month, but now we're going to put it to you this month." In my heart and my soul, Chief, you know, with 36 years of service in the LAPD, Councilmember Parks, 38, 39 years of service, it's interesting that four members here who serve in law enforcement are in this focus of public safety that are saying, "We have a way to solve the problem without increasing the tax by a half percent." Thank you very much.
Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, it's a tough morning, yet another tough day for me because of this issue. And I'll tell you what I'm most fearful of this morning. I'm fearful that we are beginning to replay a month that was very difficult for everybody just less than two years ago, when we had this debate over the budget, at a time when Mayor Hahn had proposed a significant expansion of LAPD, and this council, in its fiscal prudence, was wary of granting that green light at the time because of what we were expecting out of Sacramento. And at the time, despite the press conferences and the allegations going back and forth, this council stood up in a way that made me proud, and every worst assumption actually came true. We don't need to relive that, colleagues. Today, as I hear people arguing for placing this on the ballot, or for asking the city attorney to draft this language, and as I hear some of our colleagues speaking against asking the city attorney to draft the language, and against placing something on the ballot, I'm hearing the same, much the same today as I heard then. And that is, we have a city council united in being for public safety. Where we disagree is how, and maybe even when, to go about achieving these expansions in the police department. So it's not a policy argument or a policy debate that we're having. Every single person from the mayor on down is for public safety. Every single person from the mayor on down is for expanding the police department. Where we are debating is when and how we believe we can responsibly accomplish that. So let's not lose sight of that big picture. Number two, I mentioned the how and the when, and others have made reference to previous ballot measures, like Mr. Zine just did. More recently, Measure A. Big difference between Measure A and today. And Mr. Smith, thank you for the remarks about committee the other day. Measure A was tough enough as it was, and we were all united at the time. And Measure A got 64% of the vote within the city of Los Angeles. I disagree. It's not a no vote. 64% of the people of this city agreeing on something is a majority. But colleagues, it's also not a yes vote, because the law in California requires for a measure like this to be successful to obtain two-thirds voter approval. So it wasn't a win, and it wasn't a loss, but at the end of the day, it's not getting us any police officers, and my concern is that we run the same risk this go-around. We can argue back and forth on running a better campaign or churning out more voters, and, you know, who's going to turn out this time versus last time. The fact of the matter is, in California, we have a two-thirds threshold if we're going to go about it this way. Now, I've offered an alternative that only requires a majority vote, and maybe that was a little too out of the box for some, but what, what led me to pull back last Wednesday, or last Tuesday in committee, was coming into City Hall and seeing this city family split on this issue. Some people wanted to go forward, come hell or high water, with putting a measure on the May ballot. Some dead-set against it, and even those who were for it, split on the approach. We've done our homework, I've shared with all of you the feedback from polling information that we did, and yes, I was in the same room, getting debriefed by pollsters along with the mayor's folks, and their big recommendation then was wait till June 2006, a much better political climate with which to do this, more time to build consensus, craft a smarter proposal, and, and yes, run a better campaign too. So that's why my heart is heavy this morning, because I too, like Mr. Reyes, like Mr. Ludlow, like Mr. Villagosa, like Ms. Perry and others around this horse, you have districts where crime is way too high. But the question that weighs on my brain is, it's not a matter of going about it this year versus waiting one year. My concern is, if we go out this year, when it's not the most strategic time, not the most opportune time to get voter approval, that we can't go again for maybe another five years, because we can't go this May and lose, and turn right back around and try again in June. If we know strategically that it's better to wait a year and get our act together, then let's do so, and I do say that with a heavy heart.
Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add my voice to the discussion. One thing I'd like to mention is that I probably have the most violent crime in any part of the city. We lost 200 members of the 8th District in the last 24 months. And even with that, and also a historical support of the police on almost every issue, 8th District did not support the countywide initiative. And the things that they have done year in and year out, they voted for libraries, police stations, fire stations, the zoo, public schools, millions and millions of dollars of bond fund, but yet their kids are dying at a rate higher than any other. 200 young, black and brown-- 200 young, black and brown males dead on the city streets in 24 months. Yet, what we look at, in the sense of the public, when I went out into the community, and they talk about, “How many more times are you going to bring this back? It’s about the seventh time.” We’re telling you, we understand the infrastructure issues. We don’t understand the personnel issues, and we’re not going to support personnel issues, because we’re not convinced that the city of LA is using all of its research sources properly. We also hear from the business community about this island. And yet, when we talk about it, people that don’t own businesses sometime have a different perspective than those that do. We know that our surrounding areas, particularly Culver City and others, have three to five times the per capita sales tax that our city does. We know that we’re at least 1,000 to 2,000 under the county. So we’re already behind the curb on sales tax. We don’t need to add another half cent so that we can allow Culver City to keep building a brand-new city. They almost have 30,000 per capita sales tax compared to the city of LA at 6,000. I think also, when we look at the issue of business, business in our community, in our city, creates jobs. Jobs create revenue, and revenue creates city services. So we can’t ignore what the business community has told us about the importance of jobs, because we rely on that revenue to create the very city business that we have. One of the things that we discussed several months ago, and I remember it because I was on the end of a 14-to-1 vote, we had an opportunity several months ago, when we spent $80 million for a pay raise, we could have hired 800 police officers. And at that time, we discussed, do we want a smaller department with more money, or do we want a larger department that paid a little less? 16 percent pay raise over a three-year period, well over the cost of living, $80 million. We could have done that here in the council, as opposed to today, giving the pay raise and then coming back and saying to the public, “Give me more money to pay higher-priced police officers.” The other issue, and I just want to comment on Ed’s comment, this isn’t politics, this is a matter of people looking at services that they believe they’re not getting. This is people that we hear constantly in the Valley saying, “We’re not getting our fair share.” They’re people in the 8th District that believes they’re not getting their fair share. And I think, as I’ve mentioned over and over, as long as, in our, the 8th District, as long as police officers are working three days a week, people are not going to support additional police officers. It’s that clear? We can ignore it, we can keep adding to it, we can ignore it, but the issue is, the public is smarter than we give them credit for. They understand the taxation, they’re paying for it, they’re not going to support something that they believe, and we don’t have the credibility, to believe what we’re telling them. And as I mentioned, Mr. Padilla mentioned earlier, if we were all united on the county sales tax, and it didn’t pass, it is not going to pass when we’re divided at the level we are, because it is not something people have a commitment to, and the credibility when they see all the other things going on. We’re not a poor city, but we are schizophrenic about our priorities. And what’s unfortunate is every day is the number-one priority. Well, a year ago, the number-one priority was wages. Today, we’re saying it’s more police officers. We could have solved the police officer problem a year ago. Thank you.
Councilmember Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I’d like to first thank and compliment Greg Smith for his efforts on his proposal, so that we could get to the point where we can hire a couple hundred officers much quicker than having to go to the voters and find out if they’re willing to allow us the opportunity with a half-cent sales tax, so we can hire over 1,000 officers. With that, Chief Bratton, I know this might be deja vu for us, because we covered this in committee, but not everybody who watched committee is watching today. I think the voters and the people of Los Angeles need to hear this discussion. First of all, the, let’s call it the Smith proposal, will the Smith proposal give us the long-term needed officers that we need, and will it give us the number of officers that you have already let us know that we need?
No.
The answer was no? So in other words, this is, this is what, this is like priming the pump, this is an opportunity for us to start getting more officers, but it isn’t a permanent solution, and nor is it the number of officers that you’ve expressed to us that you would need to get crime down, and to be able to do the job that you feel the city of Los Angeles deserves?
It’s a very good next step. The funding, if, and this is a big if, based on some of the language I’ve heard there this morning, in terms of how you would craft the vote on Item 22, because I’m not quite clear if this council is committing today to clearly standing up that all $66 million would go for police officers. I thought what I heard was, you’ll vote today to consider how that money will be used when it becomes available. Four months down the line, I’ll be very interested as to whether we have the same unanimity that all $66 million goes for those police officers. So I’m supportive of 22, but I’d like to see title language that committing today, that that $60 million, when it becomes available, will be used for police officers. I don’t want to be sitting here in July, and because the city’s $300 million projected budget deficit next year supersedes the use of that money, that I’m sitting here in July, and you say, “Sorry, we’re going to use the $66 million for the budget deficit, not for police.”
Thank you, chief. You bring up a very, very good point. And the point that you brought up is, if we do go to the voters, that language will be definite, that language will be etched in stone. The city of Los Angeles won’t be able to use the money for other than what we proposed to the voters that they’re voting for. And the Smith proposal, one of the things I’d like to compliment my colleague Greg Smith, I’ve worked with a lot of elected officials, governors, and senators, and county supervisors, et cetera. I’d like to compliment you, because you’ve described your proposal as it is. You haven’t tried to overembellish it, you haven’t tried to say it’s the long-term overall solution. You said, “This is a solution for today that gets us closer to where we need to be.” And I want to thank you for being forthright, not trying to fool anybody into what it really is. It’s a good proposal, and I support it 110 percent. To me, that’s a thumbs up, that’s an automatic. Now, we go to the much more complicated political issue, which is trying to go to the voters and talk to them, and allow them to decide if they’re willing to raise their own taxes, sales tax, for us to have a safer city. Another question I have for you, chief, is, and this has to do with what Wendy Grul was talking about earlier, we spent a lot of hours reducing the business tax in this city, and we’re very proud of that. We want it to be a friendlier city to our constituents, and also to the people who choose to do business in this wonderful city. But when it comes to more officers, you were the chief of police in New York, you got to witness, and you got to be part of the implementation of a safer city by implementing a much broader program with departments working together, and having more badges, so to speak. Did business increase with that? And if it did, what happened? My time?
The city of New York experience, and I should point out, and without fear of contradiction from any reputable source, the principal reason for the turnaround in that city between 1994 and 1996, in terms of its economic viability, was the police. The fact that that city raised its personal income tax, city of New York has a personal income tax on top of the state tax, it raised its personal income tax to hire 7,000 more police. The supposition was that the city was in danger of collapse. Over 300,000 jobs and untold numbers of businesses had left the city during the period 1990 to 1993 because of crime, strictly because of crime. And all that tax revenue, all those jobs had gone to New Jersey, and Connecticut, and elsewhere. The city, with its investment, made the city safe. Businesses came back, 40 to 50 new hotels, millions of additional tourists. With those hotels and tourists came jobs, increased tax revenue. I’ve talked to a number of your colleagues, and they’ve referenced the experts, the so-called experts, the economists. Economists like Weatherman here in California, they’re wrong more often than they’re right. If they were right so often, we’d all be rich in the stock market, but they can’t predict tomorrow what’s going to happen. And so the economic voodoo that’s being relied on in terms of, this is going to drive jobs and money and sales tax out of the city, baloney. Some will leave. Let them go. If they want to spend $3 and 3 hours trying to go and save $10 someplace, let them go. The reality is, if we make Los Angeles safe, they will come, the tourists, the businesses, the tax dollars, and the additional city services that we can support. We did an event earlier this week with Eric Garcetti and Tom LaBonde up in Hollywood, where the Hollywood business community clearly indicated that as we made it safer there the last several years, their businesses had improved dramatically, more tourists coming, staying overnight, not just day trips, because they felt safe at night. Go to Scooby-Doo, the hot dog stand, he now stays open at 2 o’clock in the morning. Why? Because there’s people there who feel safe to go up and down that street at night. So as your police chief, who has experience elsewhere now, after 27 months working with this city and this council, my prediction is, that if you were to pass this, that business would improve, safety would improve, and the economists once again would be proven wrong.
Thank you, chief, for bringing that clarity to this debate. And it is a debate, as you can see. But one of the things that I want to make sure that I make very clear, both to the mayor’s office, and those individuals who have said they’ll step up and make sure that this is a campaign that’s positive, and something that we let the voters know what’s in their best interest, so they can make the final decision. In addition to that, here with our Bill Fujioka and our Mr. Miller, we need to make sure, and our city attorney’s office, we need to make sure that in the next two weeks, we don’t, we’re not confronted with a half-baked, half-cent sales tax. We need to define what we’re going to do with this, we need to make sure that people understand that it incorporates the juvenile justice component, the prevention and intervention components. I remind you, as has been said on this floor before, as Mr. Bratton, Chief Bratton, you’ve clarified, an investigation on a homicide can cost our taxpayers as much as $1 million just for one investigation. What prevention can do to make this not only a safer city, but a much more efficient city? When you saw the incident that occurred today, and you saw the amount of law enforcement and the lifesavers of the people who are in the fire department, when you saw the number of people, that it’s a drain on the rest of the city, not in a bad way, it’s just, that’s just the way it has to be. We have to go to that scene, and then we don’t have enough resources back at home to take care of other incidents at that moment. We need to have a safer, healthier city. But I can’t, I can’t tell you honestly that I’m going to vote for this two weeks from now, when we’re, when we see the final product. That final product has to be fine-tuned. That final product has to tell the truth about what we need to do, and what we are going to do if the voters entrust us with another half-cent sales tax in this city. I think it’s very important for us to realize that what happened in New York, and correct me if I’m wrong, chief, what happened in New York, there were some politicians who bit the bullet, and made some decisions about raising the taxes in New York. But some of those politicians didn’t get to see the benefit of all of that.
Mr. Cardenas.
But it was the people of New York. With a safer city, it was the businesses of New York. Because they did it right, because they did it in a comprehensive way, the entire community of New York was able to benefit. It’s unfortunate that those pioneers, or those people who were willing to bite the bullet, as politicians, may have lost their jobs because of that, or was related to that. That’s unfortunate. But the bottom line is, the aftermath of all the good that happened, it was well worth it. Thank you, chief.
Ms. Biskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for asking the chief those questions. I would like to ask, I think everyone in the council who has wanted to speak, at least so far, has, for the first time, has spoken, so we’re now beginning around the second time. Let me ask our two chiefs and CAO if there’s anything they’d like to add, from their perspective, that they haven’t been able to say to us so far before we continue our debate. Chief Bratton, Chief Pamatry, CAO.
Just had the perspective from the fire department, and it’s certainly nice to be here, speaking to friends. I can recall back a short 10 years ago, coming here and having a little different reception. I’m not here to say that we haven’t had support. The fire department from this council and from the mayor, we’ve had tremendous support. Given that, we are still short of what you have all set as plans for the department, to get paramedic ambulances in every fire station, to restore the 10th member at those fire stations, to ensure that we have staffing in five new fire stations that the city is not paying for, that the developer agreements are paying for, but come without staffing that we have to staff. You’ve been very kind and very supportive, but I also recognize, and I had a conversation with one of the other general managers who is in support of this motion, because what happens if we don’t have sufficient money to fund that staffing? We are competing, like everyone else, the rest of the departments, to get that money, recognizing the police department does need new, more police officers. So certainly, our portion in this would take away some of that pressure from the other departments, from some of the decisions you’ll have to be making in the future, but I think many of you have summed it up better than I can say, is that, you know, polls are great. I can remember a short few years ago, meeting a very young member on the campaign trail, two very young members on the campaign trail, Councilman Padilla and Councilman Cardenas. I think if you looked at the polls then, unknown people at that time campaigning, walking up and introducing themselves, and I dare say, many of you here on the council, if you listened to the polls, you wouldn’t have been running, because your chances to getting elected wouldn’t have been what the polls said.
It’d be worse now.
It’ll be worse after. And I think certainly, we’ve had experience with that on the fire department. One of the most successful initiatives, the Prop F, was because we defined, as Councilman Cardenas is saying, in the next two weeks, we can bring back the definition, so that everywhere we go, we can answer the question, “What does it mean to me?” And I know Chief Bratton and the police department will do the same thing, where we can bring to you the very specifics, and then give the opportunity to the people to let them make that decision, and move forward in that case. Thank you.
Chief.
It’s a privilege to sit here beside Chief Pamatry, had the opportunity this morning to watch his leadership in his department do extraordinary work at the horrific tragedy they were faced with early this morning. But as Councilmember Cardenas ably pointed out, to address those types of incidents which occur with all too great frequency, we oftentimes have to go on tactical, move resources all over the city, and it does leave us stretched dangerously thin from time to time. The reality of policing in this city is that we are stretched dangerously thin all the time. Councilmember Zine referenced the fact that, on his side of the room, and actually, Councilman Reyes, you better get on the other side, because it seems like it is lining up left versus the right, and Jan Perry, that Councilmember Zine referenced the law enforcement experience of himself, Councilmember Smith, certainly former chief Parks with his 38 years with the department, and they know firsthand how desperate the situation is out there in terms of safety for residents, but also safety of our officers, and how their actions are all the more courageous, understanding how few of them there are out there. I want to thank all of you for being here today. The fact that all council members are in attendance is to be applauded. None of you are trying to duck this issue. You are standing up for your convictions, your beliefs, and on behalf of your constituents, I’m certainly along with Chief Pamatry, hoping to change a few minds. Over the last several weeks, I’ve met with each and every one of you, or most of you, some I still have not had the opportunity to meet with, and I thank you for that opportunity to speak in more detail on this issue, and I thank you for the willingness to discuss this in this open forum. Chief Pamatry is correct, that he, like myself, I think we have found common ground in terms of the mutual respect we have for each other, the love we have for this city, and our attention to this issue. Nevertheless, I need help. Chief Pamatry needs help, your constituents need help. We, as the mayor has indicated, have tried for too long to do too much with too little. Over the last 27 months at Urban Policy Chief, I don’t think any of you can point to a single time when I complained about the lack of resources. I will speak to it, on behalf of the men and women of the department I represent, I will plead on their behalf. But rather, what we have sought to do is to continually try to make more use of what we have. You’re very aware of that, through the organizations that you have supported, the efficiencies that have in fact resulted in the equivalent of hundreds of more police without a raise in the budget. The efficiencies that we’re planning this year with the existing resources, without even taking into account whatever the budget situation is next fiscal year, and the horrific year we’re looking at, we anticipate returning to service in excess of 200, the equivalent of additional 200 police officers, without a single cent increase in our budget. We are working hard to do more with what we have. It has resulted in a safer city, crime is down, arrests where necessary are up, we have saved millions of dollars in court costs for overtime, despite a significant increase in arrests. We have worked with you on efficiencies, that the fact that 20-some-odd police officers used to do background investigations are now done by the city department of personnel. We are working with the city’s traffic department, so that they can do a lot of the work that my offices don’t need to do, and devote their time to better services. We will continue to work harder with what we have. But as I’ve said to each of you in the individual meetings that we’ve had over the last several weeks, and as I meet with several of the rest of you who have not had that opportunity, we are approaching a point in time where you really cannot expect much more of the men and women of this department. They are, they are working hard in very dangerous situations, and we have such a capacity and such a capability to do more with additional resources. You are not You would not be throwing good money after bad at this problem. You would effectively be putting money into an organization that is conscious of how to use that money wisely to the best advantage. What I'm asking is very similar to what Chief Pamatry has asked, that allow this measure to go to the city attorney, to put language together that could then be debated on February 11th, to see if it meets the needs that we think are out there, to see if it addresses some of the issues of concern you have raised. I applaud Councilmember Smith on his effort to try and find additional resources with the VLF. My comfort level would be raised if we could get a vote locking in that money, but I worry about next year and the $200 million to $300 million budget deficit you're going to have to face. Those offices are desperately needed. We would use them well, and I hope we get them. But the reality is that we still need more. And we need more in terms of an investment. This is not a cost to the city. This is an investment, and I have tremendous experience with investments of a similar nature in New York City. More police, properly led, properly supported, result in a safer city. Safer city means more jobs, more business investment, more tourists, more sales tax revenue. That will more than pay for the half-cent investment in public safety. We are committed to working with what we have. We are committed to working as hard as we can. But I'm here on behalf of the 12,000 men and women I represent, pleading, actually pleading with you to give this your best consideration and to hopefully allow it to go forward, let the city attorney put it together, and then let us return it February 11th and see if that language is agreeable to enough of you to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Bratton and Chief Pamatry. Members, I just wanted to react a little bit to some of the comments were made. Mr. Padilla said, it was unfortunate that we might be revisiting a replay of two years ago. Two years ago, we had money in the budget to try to hire more officers. This council recognized that money in the budget to hire new officers then was going to do a disservice to the city. We used the words that haven't been raised yet, structural deficit. Had we hired those officers then, we would have been in a much, much deeper hole, and we knew, our CAO and our CLA came here and as close to pounded the table as they could, our budget and finance committee chair said, we can't go into structural deficit. We can't use one-time money to do something when we know that money's not going to be there afterwards. This is exactly the same today. Mr. Smith has found through and supports the VLF money, and this is old money that we were due, in part, starting with one-time money, as it's paid back. Take that one-time money, put it into the police department, start hiring the officers. He says there's an ongoing stream, that is future VLF money. But the future VLF money that we always thought we had was already included in the budget. So if we guarantee future VLF money and say no new money, we are taking another hole out of the budget and taking the structural deficit. We know that Mr. Fujioka has told us we have a $300 million gap next year. If we take another 60 million out, it's 360, and members, we can't cover that by efficiencies. So that's why the brilliance of the partnership, take that one-time money, which we said we would never do, take that one-time money, start it in the process, but match it to the voters and said, voters, this is a partnership. This is a plea from our department, this is a plea from the city. We have found some money that we can start this up. We've got to match it long-term, lasting long beyond when we're all going to be gone and when the mayor's going to be gone and we're going to go, we're going to have a long-time commitment in this city to do the job with the specificity that our fire department, our police department, and the intervention programs need to have as a real stream. So I believe that it's appropriate. We talk about a little bit of schizophrenia. The schizophrenia is, we always talk, oh, we're going to do it, we're going to get efficient, we're going to do these economies, but when it comes to the budget time, we see the reality. And I applaud Chief Parks, like former Chief Parks and our budget chair, Chief Parks, Councilmember Parks, who has acknowledged that we really have to fix the structural deficit. We can't spend one-time money. We have said that as a council, and if we commit to spending something out of a real stream out of the regular budget, we just are going to say to all the other general managers, and I can appreciate why they might have said to Chief Pamatry or Chief Bratton, it's going to mean it's harder for us. It means the library hours may be shortened, it means we may have fewer street miles paid, we may do fewer capital improvement projects, all those things that we say at budget time we can't cut. So members, it's not as if we're big spenders here and spend a lot frivolously. We spend based on what we think our communities need, based on what our financial advisors advise us. This is the partnership. VLF money to start it, going back to the voters, asking them to give us the chance to find the additional money through their efforts that are going to be a boon to everybody long-term in this city if we keep it up and hire those officers and have that commitment and that dedication to a real stream of new officers, additional firefighting services, and new continued intervention and prevention programs.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just make one comment, again, on what something was said, and Councilman Zine talked about all the failures we've had so far going to the voters and asking to hire more police officers. And while certainly the need is more police officers, and here, our own chief of police say, I need your help here, was very compelling. But I will say that all the other measures did not include, except for the most recent one, did not include money for our firefighters, our paramedics, and more specifically, for crime prevention and intervention. This city now is very sophisticated. Our voters are very knowledgeable about what it's going to take to make this a safe city. Yes, it's going to be more police officers, but we believe very strongly that a lot of money, and it's going to be $30 million, will be spent on preventing crime from ever happening in the first place, about spending money to keep our kids out of gangs, to give them positive places to go after school. For groups like Toblerone Settlement, I see Howard Euler in the, in the audience today, his men and women are out there in the streets, working with gang members, trying to convince them to turn their lives around and to prevent crime from this measure. If we put this on the ballot, we'll have all of that. And I still say, you can be against this, you can see, you can argue for, you don't think this is the way to hire more police officers, but let me tell you something. Our constituents don't like it when we make this decision for them. They want the opportunity to make this decision for themselves. This is democracy. Let them decide whether or not they want to spend that three cents on their double-double for more police officers. Let's not make that decision for them. And I will say, if I can get a second, Martin, I know we agreed to give, to put 15% of this into crime prevention. If I can get a second, I want to move that the recommendations to the CAO, CLA, and the city attorney include funding a full 10% towards firefighter staffing, training of our paramedics, and I really want to say our 24 ambulances, 24-hour ambulances in all our stations.
Second. Mr. Lutler.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, previous question has been called. Colleagues, a yes vote ends discussion and leads us to a vote, no vote continues discussion. Let's open the roll on the previous question. Roll is open on the previous question. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, seven noes.
Okay, motion doesn't carry. Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. What I wanted to thank the chief for meeting with me and talking about some of the issues in which I can look into my constituents' eyes and say, this is going to make a difference. I want to appreciate the fact that we are going to talk about one district having six divisions, what the implications that has, and how we can improve and look at our statistical analysis and see what indicators, what criteria we can use to improve that situation. Because my communities tend to be on the edge, on the edge of all these divisions, and as a result, don't feel they're getting, and I can see how we need to improve many of our services. But that being said, the work you've done in MacArthur Park, the crime going down at least 50%, in good parts of my district have made a huge difference in the quality of life, but I can see how we need more. And Bernard, you're right. Let's assume this is not about politics, let's assume this is about service. As I recall, the 77th Division, the Southeast Division, has been experiencing killings even when you were chief. And I don't say that to mock him, I say that because it reaffirms the notion that this pie is not big enough. We need to increase this pie. Even with the personnel, even the service issue, the performance issue at that time, and even today, given the 200 killings have gone on for the past two years, you will see a trend of those killings going on for perhaps the past 15, 20 years. And it reaffirms and reinforces the fact that we do need more personnel, and this is the only way we can improve that service. So it seems to me, no matter who's chief, if you have, for every one officer, what is it, 9,000 gang members? Or was it 1,000 gang members? Regardless, the odds are overwhelming. We need to make that change. So let's focus on what our constituents need. I appreciate Councilman Padilla's analysis, but quite frankly, I got to the point where my community just can't wait anymore.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Is it appropriate that I give my public time to anyone who wants to comment for three minutes? Because we're not having a public hearing on this. Could I do that?
Yeah.
No, I'm not going to move it, I changed my mind. I want to let the public speak.
Sure, your time is your time.
Okay, all right. So if anybody wants to speak, you've got three minutes. Introduce yourself and line up.
Monica Harmon. I'd like to acknowledge Officer Lizaraga's widow, Joyce Lizaraga, who is here with us today. Her husband would have been 32 years old on Monday. Next month will be one year that he passed away. He was killed in the line of duty. And I just want to remind all of you that this isn't about politics, this isn't about anything else but officers' lives. Are you going to make us wait one year until an officer possibly is killed, and then you're going to get it? New York, Boston, Philadelphia, Chicago, their, their residents don't have to come here like I and plead to please give us more officers. Half a cent, if you don't put this on the ballot, you're basically telling the police officers, your life is not worth half a cent. And I don't think that's message you want to send. So put this on the ballot, let us decide. You haven't made decisions that are the best for the city. It's our chance now to tell you how to do it.
Thank you. 20 seconds, each of us, that's what we're told. All right. It is not about what, it's about when. We have the opportunity now, and a bargain, $75,000 a policeman instead of $100,000, to use that cop's money and get some people here for you right away, chief. Your arguments, your problems will continue, you will continue to work on your budget until it serves all of our needs, especially our police needs. I look forward to you doing it. I've heard enough diplomacy, I've heard too much rhetoric. Let's hear some action.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Howard Euler. I chair the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. I'm also the director of Toblerone Settlement House, which houses the largest grant for Bridges Two gang intervention work, and that shares it with five agencies, most of which get more money than we get. The neighborhood council I chair votes yes for putting this on the ballot and letting the voters decide. Period.
Merv Evans from Los Angeles, whether you agree with it or you don't agree with it, let the voters decide. But you can't ask the people of this city to go with increased water, increased sewer, and tax after tax. You have to economize somewhere and form a new partnership, chief, with our young people. They are part of this community and apart from it.
Yes, my name is Jay Handel. I'm the president of the West LA Chamber of Commerce, representing over 1,250 businesses. We have overwhelmingly endorsed both Councilman Smith's and the half-cent sales tax. We're not afraid of losing people, we're afraid of losing our businesses. My business has been held up twice in Brentwood, not in South Central, armed robbery takeover, 15-minute response. Put a 9-millimeter gun to every head and then come and tell me we shouldn't put it on the, on the ballot. The reality is, we're in trouble. We need help. Thank you.
Sherry Ramstead, Northridge West Neighborhood Council, and Jim Elger, who is out, dislocated me, on behalf of both of us as independent community members, we are absolutely behind Greg Smith on this matter. Since I got to keep it short, I can't say my lovely speech, but we are behind you.
I'm Damon Ozzoli from the Labor Community Strategy Center, and I'm probably one of the few people who actually don't think this should be actually on the ballot. Authentic public safety is when we give service to homeless peoples instead of arresting them, when our students can have their own school books, textbooks, instead of sharing them. So what we need to do is have living ways jobs to protect the healthcare infrastructure of Los Angeles and not put this on the ballot.
Mr. Labange.
Yes, I'm 52 seconds over. Who's next?
Mr. Parks, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Parks, you want to take my spot here? You can meet all these people? Okay, all right, okay.
Continue to speak.
Go ahead.
I'm Barton Cooper. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. ViCA voted unanimously with its board of 90 of the leading business and other leaders of this city to oppose the half-cent business tax, because we know how much damage this will really do to the business community. You have given us with one hand, and you have taken the almost step today of beginning to take away what you have given us in our business tax reform. We support public safety, as does everyone else. My own nephew is a detective in the Los Angeles Police Department, and I hear more stories about what happens to cops on the street than do many of you. We think that Councilman Smith's proposal is indicative of the creative way to go and solve the real problem that many of you have pointed out, which can be found in opposition to a half-cent business tax increase, which is an easy way to put the burden back on business where you've just taken it away and make it easier for all the people in Santa Monica, and Calabasas, and Pasadena, and Burbank, and Glendale, and all those other cities to once again say, we're taking business from Los Angeles. Thank you.
I was born and raised here in the city of Los Angeles, and--
Your name, sir?
Councilman Zine, Zine mentioned, since 1981, they've been trying to pass something to have more police officers and everything. Since 1981, then, we haven't had any increase. We need something over here. We need, we're in a very desperate situation here in the city of Los Angeles. I don't know why some of these councilmen are so afraid of letting this measure go before the, before the public, this proposition go before the public. I am for it, and I believe the, the people have the right to, to vote on it. Thank you.
Just be brief to the point, tell them where you live.
My name is Irene Alanis. I live in Highland Park. I ask you, how can our unique police department function with a skeleton crew? This weekend, a few weeks, a few blocks from my home, a 20-year-old lost his life at a very early age. How many youngsters do we have to lose? And lose a son, a grandson, a cousin, a nephew? These are cries, these are cries of blood. Until it hits home, then you will understand what it means. Remember 9/11? How many people have forgotten already? And today, today was a tragic accident. So let's remember that. Thank you.
Hi, Rusty Millar, Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. I'd like to commend Councilman Smith for his idea of coming up with some additional funds, and also, our neighborhood council supported Proposition A, and Chief Bratton came and spoke to us in September about this, and I urge you to maybe try to consolidate all this, if that's what you're going to do, into one motion and get these funds available, because the increased demands on public safety since 9/11 and just in general in the city of, like Los Angeles, they need the resources, and I don't want the senior leads in my area, Al Pohanki or Don Lewis, to be starved to be able to deliver the services I want them to provide to all of us. So, thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Steve Twining. I represent the West Los Angeles Community Police Advisory Board. Last night, voted to support the half-cent sales tax increase. I'm also chairman, chairman of the Hillside Federation, which represents 200,000 homeowners in the hills. I'm also president of the Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council. I'm also president of the Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council. I'm speaking on behalf of the CPAB. They're very much in favor. Last night, a police captain told us about a demonstration in Westwood where there were 1,200 peace demonstrators and only 110 officers. And only with luck were they able to keep the demonstration from becoming a major disaster. The western part of the city is grossly understaffed in terms of police. My family pays 90 bucks a month for private security, including an alarm to protect that which we worked all our lives to attain. The basic cars in West Los Angeles are not fully staffed. Although violent crime is down 8% this year in West Los Angeles, burglaries in the hillside area of LA are up 3%. It is very rare that one sees a police car north of sunset. The ratio of police in West Los Angeles is far less than that of Culver City, Beverly Hills, and Santa Monica. There've been a rash of follow-home robberies, home invasions. A recent suspect dressed in a gas company uniform robbed a homeowner at knife point. In addition to more officers, technology is the key. MacArthur's Park's crime has been dramatically reduced due to the use of cameras. A new camera computer system used successfully in Italy for the last two, three years can scan from the front and rear automobiles to indicate if they've been stolen. I'm well aware that this is a highly politically charged situation. We need additional police, as suggested by Councilman Smith. We need both the Councilman Smith proposal and we need the half-cent sales tax increase to provide significant numbers of officers to our community and to support the fire department as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Mendez, a board member of the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber. And I'm here on behalf of the board of the chamber to offer our support for this measure. Thank you.
My name is Maris Clement. I'm a simple resident in Hollywood, in Spalding Square community. I really believe in the future of Los Angeles. I do not believe in more deficit or potential deficit. I really support this measure. And I really hope it works and we get to vote on it individually. Thank you.
My name is Bill Upchurch. I'm with the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council. I think this is a good value. I support the Item 23 to let me vote on it. It's my money. If I can get 25, 30 policemen in Harbor Division for 40, 50, 60, 70 dollars a year out of my pocket, that's a good deal. Let me decide.
Good morning. I'm Becky Bendy. Oh, I guess it's afternoon now. Pardon me. I'm a member of the Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council. I'm also a member of the Citizens Unit for Participation, dealing with HUD funding for the city of Los Angeles. But I am here to provide my personal opinion. I'm very proud to be a constituent of Councilman Greg Smith's 12th District representation on this issue. He's presented an alternative to sales tax that will not be an oppressive burden to those in the city who can least afford it. One of the recommended qualifications for the cup board member is to be, quote, "supportive of the low-to-moderate-income population," unquote. I consider myself to fulfill that qualification. With the salaries and additional benefits to city councilpersons who support this sales tax increase, I know it's difficult to relate to the substantial population in the city who need every penny they have to survive. I ask that you hear their cries through my testimony today. Please don't force them to have to make a decision that could mean life or death if they don't have enough money to provide necessities, not luxuries, for innocent children and the elderly. Do you think I would travel 20 minutes north from my residence to a Santa Clarita auto dealer versus 45 minutes to a Van Nuys Boulevard dealer to save $4 sales tax on an $800 service bill? I might. Do you think I'd travel to Santa Clarita to purchase a new vehicle to save $100 on a $20,000 vehicle? I definitely would consider that. Or better yet, I'd go to Thousand Oaks Auto Mall in Ventura County, where I would save even more money. I also do not appreciate the way Dunn was forced to put this upon the neighborhood councils and only providing information for one position. Don't do that again. Thank you.
Mr. President, council members, 14 years I've been coming here, and you have to be proud of yourselves. This is the kind of discussion I've been waiting for 14 years. This is what we need. Chief, Mayor, we need this. Please, whatever your decision is, this is going to benefit the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Greg Smith, I'm proud to have you as my councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilman Parks, thank you for the time. And members, thanks to the public for coming down and testifying. I owe the bank about 10 minutes' time.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill, maybe you can come up and I could ask you a couple of questions. Mr. Skousky and I were talking earlier on the report, and I think we may have had an issue on the report on page 2. It was not the intent of the Budget and Finance for Public Safety to designate the remaining $45 million specifically to close the structural deficit '05-'06. What we intended is for you to come back with a report to advise us on how that money may be used, but not specifically directed. So we want to make a technical amendment to the report for Item Number 2 and basically come back with a report, but strike the '05 and '06.
Motion and the clarification on that from the committee board. That's Item 22, Element 2, which basically says 17 million set aside for the police and come back and report on the rest. No commitment one way or the other.
And that was the intent of the Budget and Finance Committee and the Public Safety Committee. I think the Smith plan had, I mentioned during committee, yes, definitely has merit. But we did ask for the opportunity to come back and to report on how we would structure that proposal.
Because I think what the concern is, that money would normally not be coming to us until '06-'07.
Which is true.
Okay. And if we front-loaded in '05-'06, we could be creating a larger $45 million hole a year later. So we don't want to designate. We want you to come back with a report and tell us how we best can use the 45 million, as opposed to saying it's directed to '05-'06. Okay. The other issue is that, Bill, would you run through just for clarification on the issue of Mr. Smith's plan? What the amount would be the first year, second year as it relates to funding that would be coming from the bonded money?
Well, first, with respect to the program offered by the state, we strongly support participating in that program because it does represent a guarantee. You know, our recommendation is grounded in the fact that we basically don't trust the state in honoring their commitment to the city. And so we need to get the money upfront. That's the first step. The Smith proposal would allow us to take advantage of the cops grant. I think you know that we rewarded the cops grant in that it technically expires this year. We have a commitment to extend the program for only one more year, which will allow us to take at least $7 million a year for three fiscal years that can be used to support the hiring of police officers. Because of the hiring process, we would probably need about $13 million the first year because the officers would be hired through the course of the entire fiscal year and not all at once because of our capacity to actually hire and train the officers. In the subsequent year, well, then we'd match that 13 with the $7 million from the cops grant. In the subsequent years, we'll need the full $18 million to fully fund the officers. And then again, we'd match it with the $7 million from the cops grant for at least two years. Beyond that period, we would be required to fund the entire $25 million.
And also, there's some flexibility in the sense that we've only had one extension. Is there a possibility of a second extension?
I would have concerns with going back for a second extension because we know that the cops grant is winding down. The Bush administration has not sent us a signal that they're going to continue with that grant. The fact that we were able to get the one-year extension, I think, was pushing it somewhat.
Okay. But also, just for clarification, we do not have to expend the entire grant. We can take a portion of it in the sense of hiring.
Which is true.
Okay. And so it's our call how much that portion as to how much money we may have available.
Yeah, that's true. That becomes a policy decision.
Okay. The other issue, I think, with, and I commend Mr. Smith for coming up with this idea. I've told him, 2/3 of it I'm very supportive of in the sense of the issue of using the grant and front-loading. But we do have to find that continuing money so that we will never put the police department in a position to say you have to lay off. But again, it's something that we have to work within the general fund for and ensure that we can come up with the money. The one thing also, Bill, what do you estimate when we did business tax of what the city's budget or revenue will grow each year?
With respect to the business tax?
No, no, just overall. In the sense of the city's budget, about 4% or something?
We're looking between 4% and 5%.
Okay. And then that's what would come to the general fund before we'd have to make our obligations to business tax?
True.
Okay. And so that could end up with, that's already programmed in the budget as we look at our five-year forecast?
Which is true.
Okay. The one thing, colleagues, I think we also have to realize that in the last four years, I believe the budget or revenue has grown just under 500 million. And so we do have some ability, and I said earlier that we're not a poor city. It's just a matter of our priorities. Unfortunately, as we look at that $480 to $500 million, if we go back and look at the bulk of it, it's been the obligatory funding for pensions and the unfunded pension was over 300 million and about 200 million in salary increase. So we spent almost all of our revenue increases as it relates to personnel costs. Is that about accurate?
That's an accurate statement.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
This will be the last time I speak. So I just want to comment. First of all, I appreciate the comments of the colleagues here who have embraced the proposal we brought forward that gives us a quick fix, a short-term fix, and gets us through some very dark times. And I appreciate that. I want to comment on something that Ms. Skousky said, and that was that this is a one-time source of revenue. It's not a one-time check. This is not a one-time source of money. If this was an ongoing source of money that was interrupted, we're getting that chunk of change back. A one-time source of money, which our policy statement is that we don't take and use for structural uses, is that we, something like the tobacco settlement, which was a one-time source of money. This is not a one-time source of money. This is a repayment of a debt. We're going to use it for police officers. So I think that's very important. I think also I want to comment, there's a proposal that was proposed, actually refined, late yesterday. And you haven't even seen it yet. But there were two proposals before the committees. One was a CAO and one was a CLA. The CAO recommendation is 17 million of the $66 million, where the rest are going qualifying for the grant and the rest of it going to balance the budget. And the other proposal is the CLA's proposal, which is very much in line with what the chief is saying here today. And that is dedicated to public safety and police so that we know we aren't going to lose these officers right away, that it's not just a short-time fix. And that he wants permanence in what we're going to do here today. And I think that's an important statement. And that is the recommendation of the CLA, that we take the entire $66 million, put it in the public trust fund that Mr. Gruel created, and guarantee that over the next five years, those officers remain on the payroll. So that no matter what happens in Sacramento, what structural problems may come along, that those officers are guaranteed they're going to stay on the payroll, that we meet the federal guidelines, which require us to keep those officers, and that the money is collecting interest in the trust fund established by Ms. Gruel's motion. I think that's a very good proposal. And what I would recommend then is that when we bring this back, that we go ahead and approve Item Number 1 on 22 today, which is instruct the CAO to go forward with the plan, to bond. That on Number 2, which says that the CAO recommendations, what we bring back and that the answer is how do we apply this to the structural deficit? That we remove that language, the last part of the sentence, and ask both the CLA and CAO to bring back their recommendations. Where we'll have a couple of weeks to look at them and analyze what the two impacts really are and see what makes the most sense. Whether we want to make a commitment and say we are going to commit to public safety for the next five years with these officers, or we're going to take a one-time shot, see what we can do with it, and put the rest in the general fund to balance the books this year. That's a discussion that needs to take place. It's not taking place today. And so I would amend Number 2 on 22 to just say both CLA, CAO recommendations come back to us on the same day that we hear back on the half-cent sales tax. So we'll have that discussion one more time and make a real commitment on that day to this chief that this is what we're going to do. And we'll have that discussion at that point. Thank you. We have segments for you, Grouse. Finally, I just want to comment also. Ms. Skousky made a statement that this adds to the structural deficit problem. One of the proposals, Mr. Miller, does yours add to the structural deficit if we take your proposal instead?
Well, it would set the money aside for PD for at least three to four years, possibly five. But we'll come back with the cash flows on that.
Yeah. And so it wouldn't be adding to the structural deficit?
Well, going forward beyond that period of time, obviously, those officers would have to be funded.
Okay. And I think that's an important distinction, that one proposal solves the problem for five years and one solves it for one year. But more importantly, contrary to what Ms. Skousky said, I am not proposing that we use the VLF in years '09, '10 onward. While I would support that, and I think it's worthy of discussion, that is not in my proposal here today. And so we are not adding anything to the structural deficit in the future years. That's a discussion to take place four years from now. Half of us won't even be here. But that is a discussion to take place at a later time. I think that's an important distinction. And finally, again, I think there's consolidated support here for the proposal that Mr. Grouse and Mr. Wise and Zine and Gruel brought forward. And that is, we're going to provide a short-term solution. And my proposal is, let's take a look at it later on without a vote of the people. Now, to answer the people that spoke out there, you haven't been disenfranchised. We had a vote of the people just three months ago. So we haven't disenfranchised you. We heard, we now have to go forward. And the best way to go forward with my plan is fix the problem today, hire police officers today. Don't wait for a half-cent sales tax. wait for a half-cent sales tax. Important distinction is July 1st of this year, with my plan, we hire 25 police officers, we general fund 25 police officers, which you've already approved, that's the ongoing replacement, the half-cent sales tax hires none. Under my plan, in August, we hire 25, in September, we hire 25, in October, we hire 25, on through the year, my plan hires police immediately, the half-cent sales tax realizes no money for six months. If you want a quick solution, that's mine, and I appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and I, I, uh, believe Greg, I think there's probably unanimous support for your proposal today, um, because it does help us in, uh, if, again, the voters decide to support the tax in May, um, that, uh, your proposal jump-started, and I think it was very creative and want to recognize you in that. Did have one question, I'm not sure if this would be, because you brought it up, and it wasn't a question I was planning on asking. When you say in the VLF in '07, '09, is that you then recommend, or you're assuming that there's a countywide ballot or something that happens later that then will take place, or take the place of those funds, and then the VLF could be used for something else? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, that could very be the case, or if not, if there is no countywide tax, then we could deal with it in that context of the 19, of the 2009-10 budget, not any sooner, we don't need to.
All right, and that, and that brings up, uh, two, two other questions. One, um, and this is an argument I heard a lot, and I took to heart, which was about the vehicles. I have, uh, Councilmember Cardenas and I share auto, auto row, um, on Van Nuys Boulevard, and have a lot of auto dealers that, uh, operate there. Um, I don't know who's the best one, and maybe it's Mr. Fujioka to answer this question. If you purchase a car, the tax is on where you purchase the car or where you live?
It's where you live.
It's where you live?
Yes.
So even if you went to Simi Valley or Ventura County, Orange County, but you lived in the city of Los Angeles, you would have to pay the tax that's currently in the city of Los Angeles?
Yes, for a car.
Okay, I just think that's important, because it has been unclear to a lot of people, and again, those of us that are trying, that are business-friendly want to make sure. Um, the other issue is that Councilmember, uh, Cardenas and I were talking about, and he mentioned in his remarks, the importance of this being a very tightly-written document as it comes forward. We've all seen, uh, not only polls, we've all read articles, we've all seen letters, and we've talked to constituents, um, they don't always trust, uh, the government in what they say they're going to do and actually comes forward, and I think it's critically important, uh, for this initiative to include, um, many of the ideas that have been raised today. One is a maintenance of, of effort, uh, which was very important to me in the countywide tax. Uh, the importance of even, and I would, I would say, uh, we should still, even after two-seven, 2007, as we have the discussion, still keep a portion of that VLF to be used for officers, because we know we need more than just the 1,200, uh, here in the city of Los Angeles. So if, if all of us, again, have our own ideas and we're going to have a discussion, is the best way to express kind of what we feel should be in there, um, uh, because there's no formal action today to instruct you in a certain way, uh, it's just to instruct you. Uh, so, from our, from your perspective, what is the best way for all of us to get that information to you about including maintenance of effort and including, I know there's a motion on fire department having 10%, Martin's, uh, issue on prevention? And hold my time for my last question.
Well, one, I think we need to separate the Smith motion from the half-cent sales tax motion, because the half-cent sales tax has, does have a degree of urgency, given that we have to instruct the city attorney by today, and then by February 11th, decide whether or not to put it on the ballot. The, uh, we can instruct the city attorney to go forward today, um, you know, if that's the policy decision, and then decide during the next few weeks how we would structure, um, the ballot arguments that would speak to the prevention issue and the, um, the fire, uh, the fire needs, and then, of course, the overwhelming needs for the police department. The, the one thing I, 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 I'd want to let you know about the, the Smith motion is that because of the comp's grant maintenance of effort level of 9228, I believe, and we're not, we won't get there until June, but probably July at the earliest, and because the, the bond issue, the next bond issue is, will be in, the first one's in February, and it's, and there's no reason to participate in that one. And the next issue after that is in July, we do not have to decide today exactly how we'll use the money. We should, and I support the Smith motion and going forward with it in concept, but in terms of deciding exactly how we'll use the money, there's not the same degree of urgency to, to make a decision today as there is for the half-cent sales tax issue, given the ballot deadlines.
And I, and I hesitate to disagree with you a little bit. Um, I think that what we also heard from the voters was, we need to, and this is why, one of the reasons I established that the fund, was the voters need to say, we're putting our mouth, our money where our mouth is as well, that if you're going to go out and ask voters to provide, uh, dollars on a sales tax, what, what are you doing as a city? And I think between what Mr. Smith is recommending and our, some of our efficiencies that you have recommended, so it may be that we have to identify, um, prior to, uh, the May ballot or prior to that, to be able to say, we are going to use, uh, a large portion of that VLF money for police officers, or it is street repair, whatever it's going to be. And so I think that, um, uh, it may not be by February 11th, but it needs to come, uh, very quickly to be able to send the message, I think Greg, you agree with me, that to send a message to everyone, whether you, again, you agree or disagree with what's going to be on the ballot, or if it's going to be on the ballot, I think we need to say to the public, here's what we're going to do, and here's why we're doing it.
Well, why, in that regard, I, I agree, there needs to be a different plan, I'm just saying, does it have to happen today?
Go in the next two weeks. Just one question on the timing, on the, uh, this is my last question, on February 11th, um, it was unclear, is February 11th the first reading of the ordinance, or it's the first reading? Okay, so it actually then has to go over one week if there's not 12 votes? Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Trusha, it was mentioned regarding the hiring, Mr. Fujioka. Regarding the hiring. I said, Mr. Fujioka.
He did.
The, the half-cent sales tax, the kickoff date to hire would be January of next year?
No.
When would the kickoff date be?
Oh, if the half-cent sales tax?
Yes.
We would, it would take us at least six, minimum six months to start collecting the revenue, which would allow us to start hiring officers if we, and, and with that, start the prevention programs and fire, if we relied solely on the half-cent sales tax.
Okay, with Mr. Smith's plan, that a number of us have agreed with, I think we're unanimous in supporting that, when can the police department, the fire department, and those other programs begin?
With, the Smith's plan only speaks to hiring police officers.
Okay, when can that begin?
Now, that can start as of July. In fact, we have a number of hiring scenarios that we'll, we'll, we'll be presenting with our report, that will show how we would structure the hiring, um, to meet the goal of attrition plus 250, or a minimum 250 officers, starting July 1st of 2005.
So, we will be six months earlier in moving forward with the hiring of police officers?
At least six months.
Okay, and the campaign that was done at the county level with the half-cent sales tax, I know that the Police Protective League put in a half a million dollars, there was other money raised, do you know what the total amount raised to promote that campaign? Do you know what the total amounted to?
I don't know, I heard somewhere around a couple of million dollars, about $2 million.
Okay, do you know what efforts have been made to raise funds to promote the half-cent sales tax in the city of Los Angeles?
I don't have the specific knowledge right now.
Okay, so if we had $2 million, and I understand my colleague, Councilmember Vigrosa, put in a half a million dollars to that campaign, and if we had a campaign of $2 million, which on a county measure did not pass, and there was a whole bunch of reasons why people may speculate, didn't pass, bottom line, didn't pass, we have no money guaranteed from any source to fund that type of program, to your knowledge?
I, I understand that there's one individual in our police commission who has committed to an independent expenditure campaign, but I don't know how much she's committed. Other than that, I haven't heard of anything else.
Okay, and, and respect to all of the members of the committee who attended this morning, I appreciate your attendance here at almost 2:00 in the afternoon, the, uh, the concerns that you have, we all share, and I want to emphasize the fact that with 36 years of LAPD experience, still on the streets as a reserve officer, we are not saying no to additional police officers. We are clearly sending the message to Chief Bratton, Chief Balmontre, and to the communities that need to have recovery programs and preventive programs, whether it be Bridges 1 and 2 or something in between, that we are going to earmark dollars for that. So it's not that we're saying no, and I want to emphasize, people who've come up to the podium to speak, it's not a no from any of us, it's a yes, it's how we're going to fund it is the question. Chief, did you have a response to how we're going to allocate funds or whatever, because we can't do it with city funds to promote it?
Relative to the, uh, raising of funds to conduct a focus marketing campaign, that I have no doubt that the money necessary to conduct an effective campaign could be raised, the large number of people who I've spoken to who supported it the last time have indicated they would support it again. Mr. Caruso, uh, has clearly indicated that he's willing to put in half a million dollars of his own money to kick that campaign off. As a reference to all of you, that I am quite comfortable if we're given the green light to go forward to educate the public about the benefits of this initiative, we would be able to raise the money to conduct that, uh, initiative, that campaign.
And Chief, the time it takes from a person who goes to Personnel Department to fill out that application, to the background investigation, to the Attendency Academy, to the graduation date, is that approximately one-year period of time?
Ballpark, it would be, could be that long, depends on how many candidates we have in the mix. If I may, uh, just step aside for a second and ask a clarification, because I didn't hear the answer from Mr. Fujioka, the, what, the half-cent sales tax, if it were to be voted on, if it were to move forward and be voted on in May, what was the answer as to when the police office, first police officers would be able to hot, be hired with that, that passage?
It would take us a period of time to start collecting the revenue, and, and the revenue from your, um, your summer sales basically starts coming in, doesn't come in till September, and, and, and then the real receipts come in December, so we wouldn't have the money in hand until December at best. We could structure a hiring program that would, that would meet your, um, the receipt of revenue.
Yes, but you would have the certainty of revenue because it was committed to, and this goes to the issue about that structural deficit. The half-cent sales tax might potentially delay the hiring of, of officers until January, when funds from that sales tax are available. However, that would then free up the money that is being committed under item 22 to be used to help deal with the structural deficit. So as part of your deliberation, you need to consider, uh, as you're looking forward, half-cent sales tax money for all time can be focused on three multiple needs, police, fire, intervention. Item 22, that certainly I would like to get those additional, uh, several hundred offices, but if you had the half-cent sales tax to work with, that money could then be used to deal with the structural deficit of the city. So just, just a, a thought or clarification on that.
Thank you, and, and I just want to close, for the folks who came down here, who said, give us the selection, give us the opportunity to vote on a measure of more police officers, just want to mention one more time, the voters were given that opportunity in 1981, '85, '87, '92, '93, and 2004, and each time, they said the same thing, and that's what we want to prevent again, thank you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President, just wanted to take a minute on, on my time to, well, first, I just want to acknowledge County Supervisor Zevia Slavsky, who's here in the back, former, uh, Councilmember here in City Wave, he's over there, welcome Supervisor. Also on my time, I'd like to ask State Senator Tom Hayden to make a couple remarks on this item.
Members of the council, sorry to, uh, even prolong this, it's been an excellent discussion, and I've learned a lot. I, um, have been following this issue, particularly the prevention and intervention, uh, questions for many years, as you know, and there's one issue today that is a fairly easy one, uh, that's whether to send it for draft and, uh, towards a vote of the people, and I would hope that the eight votes are there for that. Uh, there's, uh, that's a simple democratic, uh, issue to me, but, uh, there are more complicated, um, substantive issues, and I can understand the, um, the hesitation of some members. However, this is a little different than Measure A, uh, because of what has been added and what's been guaranteed. I can see a campaign that would be very appealing to people in this city if it was for more, uh, police, paramedics, and prevention. Police, paramedics, and prevention, I think is a powerful, uh, combination and is thematically different, uh, than Measure A in some respects. Secondly, I'm told by Councilman Ludlow's office that the polling that I've seen is based on a projected electorate this year, uh, not on the electorate of the presidential, uh, campaign of last year. And so if that polling is anywhere near accurate, and it's in the 60s, uh, a good campaign for police, paramedics, and prevention might very well, uh, reach the 2/3. If it's a majority, though, whether it's 55 or 65%, that would be a campaign that would further mold a consensus in Los Angeles, a consensus, a constituency in favor of this three-part approach, uh, police, paramedics, and prevention, which would help guarantee its success, uh, in 2006. I don't see a downside, uh, to a majority vote this time that falls slightly short if there's a commitment to a continuous campaign for this kind of measure. Uh, thank you very much, and I hope that that'll be part of your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Ludlow, anything further? No? Other members of the council wishing to be heard at this time? If not, then we're prepared to vote, if I can ask all councilmembers to return to their seats, and Madam Clerk, we've discussed these matters concurrently, but I believe we should take separate votes on items 21, 22, and 23. First vote, please.
First vote before council's item number 21, and the motion was to receive and file that matter.
Okay, uh, let's open the roll on receiving and filing 21. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that matter's received and filed, next item, please.
Item number 22 is before council, and there was a technical amendment to delete 2005, 2006 from recommendation number two, and also Mr. Smith's amendment to request the CAO and CLA to report, or to present a report when the half-cent sales tax item is before council.
Okay, this is Mr. Smith's item, let's, uh, open the roll on item 22. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, and last but not least, item 23.
Mr. President, item number 23, there were two amending motions, um, Ms. Hahn made a motion to, for the CAO, CLA, and city attorney to instruct them to include 10% towards firefighters and paramedics training, uh, in the, uh, resolution and ordinance, and also Mr. Ludlow made a motion to instruct the city attorney to include in the ordinance and resolution up to 15% of funds, uh, generated by the half-cent sales tax measure be set aside for gang prevention and after-school programs. Do you wish to vote on those separately?
Mr. President, I believe that those two can be considered friendly amendments to the committee report, so we can just vote on the committee report.
And also, there are two committee reports, do you wish to vote on them?
No, just 20, the motion I made was the Budget and Finance Committee, which is a majority report, and do you wish to receive and file then the public safety?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote on the first one first.
One, one clarification?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Garcetti, you wanted to be-
Mr. Ludlow's going to clarify, just, that I think if we just say just gang prevention and youth after-school, we may, for instance, with our DART teams, want something on domestic violence, so I think a looser definition of prevention may be better, but I'll let you make the, the, you want to change the language?
Crime prevention. So we would, we would just amend that language?
Intervention or something.
Just intervention, that's fine, yeah, it's fine.
And again, today, folks, we're giving the city attorneys the framework for the language we're asking them to prepare.
Just want to make sure that we hear it read back, just, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, that was to instruct the city attorney to include in the ordinance and resolution that up to 15% of funds generated by the half-cent sales tax measure be set aside for gang prevention.
Prevention and intervention.
Crime prevention and intervention.
And I'm sorry, I hate to be so technical, but can you just read the full thing, the amendment back one more time?
To instruct the city attorney to include in the ordinance and resolution that up to 15%-
All right, that's clear, not up to, but 15.
Oh.
You know, I, excuse me, but I, I hate to quibble, but is there a way that we can include what you want, but also mention the word "gang"? Uh, because I really think that's what, uh, the voters have told me, that, okay, gang, okay, thank you, I want that word in there.
Mr. Vigrosa? Wait a minute, one at a time, Mr. Vigrosa has the floor.
I'd like a roll call vote on the amendments.
Okay, uh, we're going to do that anyway, just for purposes of the record. So, the first vote is on Ms. Hahn's amendment, uh, relative to ensuring a specific percentage for fire department, uh, uses. Let's open the roll on Ms. Hahn's amendment.
Just a clarification, I want to make sure on the same one, is it, uh, did you, please just have the clerk read it back one more time?
Ms. Hahn's amendment.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hahn's-
I understand.
Is also to instruct the CAO, CLA, and city attorney to include 10% toward firefighter, paramedic training, and 24-hour ambulance.
Okay, roll is open, Madam Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that amendment is adopted, hold on, we're getting to-
Point of information, 24-hour ambulance or 24-hour paramedic, because there's a difference.
It was paramedic training and 24-hour ambulance.
Okay, all right, I just want to make a difference, because there's EMS ambulance, it's a difference in paramedic, right, Chief?
That's absolutely right, but, but folks, members of the council, let's let the city attorney do their job, we're treading on beginning to craft a legal language ourselves here. The next vote is on Mr. Ludlow's amending motion, which secures, uh, a specific percentage of funding for gang and other crime prevention intervention programs. How's that language? Uh, let's open the roll on Mr. Ludlow's amending motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, that is, now, now we're getting to item 23 as amended, and we do have a specific committee report that that's attached to. So, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on instructing the city attorney to draft the ballot language. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 5 noes.
Okay, so we will see you back in a couple of weeks, folks. And the other committee reports are received and filed without objection, Ms. Miskowski?
Mr. President, uh, the city attorney has indicated that February 11th is our last date act, except for a second reading, and the city attorney has indicated it's their intent to bring it back sooner than February 11th, so I just want to alert all the council members that as soon as the city attorney has it drafted, that it can be brought on the agenda, um, prior to the February 11th date, if possible.
But specific timing will depend on how quickly the city attorney can complete their work, so stay tuned. Madam Clerk, is there anything further?
Uh, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk, Councilmember LeBonde requests a excuse Tuesday, February 8th for city, excuse me, personal business that meets council policy.
Okay, excuses granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, uh, colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Any announcements today? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, um, colleagues, I just wanted to share with you some sad news, as a result of this morning's incident with our rail, with our trains. We have several city family members who were part of that incident, and I just want us to have in our prayers Bob Genovici. He's been in surgery for the past few hours, suffered one standing severe head injuries. Bob Genovici is our zoning administrator, he is the man who sustains and works for us in placing our planning police powers through the law in place. He's a tremendous worker, has been a longtime city family member, and I just want us to remember, remember him in our prayers, as well as- remember, remember him in our prayers, as well as Steve, who is our audio technician, also suffered this morning. Thank you.
Our, our thoughts and prayers do go out to them and their families. I understand, uh, Bob Genovici is actually in very critical condition, uh, so let's keep him in our hearts. Uh, other announcements, colleagues, before we get to adjourning motions? Announcements? Mr. Villagrosa?
Transportation Committee at two-thirty.
Mr. Garcetti for an announcement?
I'll, I'll do it as part of adjourning motions about today.
Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
I'm sorry, Plum Committee at two-thirty.
Okay. Any other final announcements? If not, then please rise for adjourning motions. Have your attention, please, for adjourning motions. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Vidia. If ever any of us doubted the importance that government plays in our life and how much we depend on government, being there, it was this morning when, as Mr. Reyes alluded to, uh, we had, uh, literally on the border between Glendale and Los Angeles, in the Atwater Village area, um, a tragic that I've never witnessed, a tragedy that I've never witnessed before in my life. Mr. LeBange, uh, was on scene there too, the mayor, the police and fire chief. I want to thank Glendale and Burbank, um, our sheriff's department, who lost a deputy, um, and first and foremost, ask if we adjourn in memory of the now twelve people who have perished in this accident. It was a horrible scene. I think most people know from the news that this was probably an attempted suicide that somebody backed out of, but they left their truck on the tracks, Jeep Cherokee, that, um, if you know the area, was punched all the way from Chevy Chase down to Los Feliz Boulevard, um, and caused three trains to be involved in this accident. A number of members of the city family, including one of the fatalities, was from one of our city departments here, and we're awaiting family notification before, um, going into any detail on that. Mr. LeBange was there in his capacity as MTA board member, but to see and to talk to Police Captain, Captain Aborn from Northeast Division, who talked about the police officers that were the first on the scene, and literally, colleagues and members of the public, as the train was still falling over, those officers that were in the morning patrol cars from Northeast Division were pulling people out of danger's way, um, to keep them safe from what was going on. Four to five thousand gallons of diesel fuel spilled out. There was a small fire that had started, but, uh, the fire department was able to stamp that out quickly enough that there wasn't a huge explosion and, um, igniting of all those people that were on those trains as well. And, um, it was one of those days which is unfathomable till you see that wreckage, um, and you see the, the fuel and the rain and the blood and everything mixing there together. But our, our thoughts and our prayers are with us so many, we have literally dozens of people right now in critical condition, hundreds that have been injured in one way or another. Um, and, uh, when you see life being that fragile, let us all push and do everything that we can for the family members of those who have been afflicted by this, and may the twelve whose souls have departed rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And if I may, colleagues, uh, recognize, because it's now been reported in the press that one of those twelve fatalities is, uh, Los Angeles County Sheriff Deputy James Tuccino, resident of Simi Valley, and a twenty-three, twenty-three-year veteran of the sheriff's department. Mr. LeBange?
Yeah, uh, members, it, uh, truly was a horrific event. As I made my morning hike through Griffith Park, you start hearing the symphony of sirens as I've come to know it sometimes, as you are above the hills of the city, and then you hear the hum of the helicopters above the Golden State Freeway. You think, oh, it's a tanker on the freeway, but then when you got a call from a constituent who knows my number and said, hey, there was a train wreck, and you arrive and see something that I've never seen before, steel torn apart, and the immediate action of, uh, individuals from both Los Angeles City and Glendale and other agencies responding. But the sad thing is, twelve people lost their lives. And the sad thing is, this was probably what you could call, if we were at East Coast City, a government special, because many of those people work in government who were on that train. When I went in front of the area, uh, I saw many faces ahead of our sanitation in North Central, who I know, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Villagrosa, Mr. Garcetti all know, he was on this train, well, not hurt, but the damage to others was severely. And then the message, though, if I could remember those twelve, as Eric spoke of, is how we must kiss our loved ones goodbye every day, because they left their homes, this deputy sheriff, others left their homes to come to work wherever it is, and unfortunately, a tragedy by a, a very, uh, horrible person to cause that injury of an accident, and to see the big steel, uh, just torn apart, i- it was absolutely amazing. So I stand, as we all stand, in memory of those twelve and others who have been, uh, lost in this terrible tragedy in Los Angeles-Glendale border.
Other tributes? Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Ann Curry. She was a Green Meadows neighborhood resident for over fifty years and a committed community activist. She was a Los Angeles Unified School District retiree who continued to take great pride in serving her community any way she could. She gave many volunteer hours to assist the work of her public officials and her community, the Community Coalition, Agenda, SEIU, Local Ninety-Nine, the Southeast Division CPAB, and her church. As one of the founding members of the Centurion South Central AARP Chapter Five-One, Eight-Four, and the Ninety-First Street Block Club, where she served as president, Mrs. Curry worked tirelessly to enhance the quality of life for all stakeholders in South Los Angeles. She is survived by two sisters, Mrs. Helen Smith and Mrs. Shirley Walton of Los Angeles, two brothers, Mr. Sylvester Ward and Mr. Lujin Ward, and many nieces, nephews, and friends. She will be greatly missed. Her services will be held at Inglewood Cemetery Chapel Saturday, January the twenty-ninth at nine AM.
Mr. Zane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to, uh, acknowledge, uh, my son Christopher was at that scene this morning and had great compliments for Costco, Costco, which was the property where they were taking the victims. Apparently, he was very gracious and generous with assisting victims and providing water and refreshments and trying to help them all out, so I just wanted to pass that along. And the department did go on attack alert, and they shipped officers in from all over. Uh, the attorney motion is for Louis Rosenberg passed away January seventeenth. Mr. Louis Rosenberg was born on August twenty-third, nineteen twenty-four, in the Bronx, New York, moved to California forty-seven years ago, became a resident of Winnetka in August nineteen sixty-one, served his country in World War II, received a Bronze Star for distinguishing himself by heroic achievement during the war. For over thirty years, he was a design engineer, working on the design of such aircraft as his DC-nine and DC-ten. While serving in the war, he served an interpreter for his captain and aided in nursing concentration camp victims back to health. Mr. Rosenberg completed his service to his country and continued to serve his community as an active member of the Winnetka Neighborhood Watch. Also served as an integral, integral part of the interim board of the Winnetka Neighborhood Council and aided in the formation committee of the Winnetka Neighborhood Council. Devoted to his country and to his family, and worked to make his community a better place. After the nineteen ninety-four Northridge earthquake, Mr. Rosenberg went around to each house in his neighborhood, helping neighbors to turn off their gas and to ensure their safety. He passed away on January seventeenth at the age of eighty. Loved by his family and friends and community, he will be greatly missed, and is survived by three children, Richard, Alan, and Randy, grandchildren Carolyn and Blair. May Louis Rosenberg rest in peace.
Other tributes? Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add to, uh, to Ms. Perry's, uh, adjourning motion. I wasn't aware, but just on a personal note, Ms. Curry, uh, back when the nuisance alley program actually first got started in LA, Ms. Curry was one of the first ones to jump on that, the street, the alley between Ninety-First and Ninety-Second. Uh, she got a beautiful, beautiful garden and barbecue set up in an area that had been home to hypodermics and all types of madness. She loved that barbecue and, uh, just a real testament to, uh, to neighborhood people taken back. What a loss to the city, and, uh, I appreciate you bringing her name in.
Madam Clerk? Please call the roll. All members on Ms. Perry's.